Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday. On a different day than usual. It is Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. We are meeting at the Gloucester School Committee and we are meeting at Gloucester High School, thirty-two Elizabeth Johnson Road, Gloucester, Mass. The public is welcome to attend meetings in person, often through the Zoom link provided on the agenda. The meeting notice will reflect if the meeting is Zoomed only. As the amendments to the open meeting law allow, the school committee may continue. All meetings will be open. Please note that in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupted. I'll call this meeting to order and state that permission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, well-learned, or so. Gary, for...
Gary Fresh, CFO.
Amy Pasco, Assistant Superintendent.
Ben Lummis, Mr. Dean.
Jeremy McKeeans, School Committee.
Melissa Brown, School Committee.
Nancy Smith, School Committee.
Love, Gold, ready?
The go from the Gloucester.
Dr. Delisi, recording center.
Okay, I ask that you stand in driving. First item of business is oral communication. The public shall have the opportunity at every regular school committee meeting to be heard under oral communications. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has requests or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem within a debate, and a matter may be referred to the upper set. For items that are on the agenda, members of the public may address the committee with condition of their care. Speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. She shall submit a copy of the care communication to the recording. If there is anyone that would like to address the school committee. Name and address for the record.
I'm sorry?
Name and address for the record.
Um, I don't live in Gloucester, but I'm an employee of the Gloucester Public Schools. Dear members of the Gloucester School Committee.
Name and address.
My name is Joanne. That's in my first. My name is Joanne Cotelli. I live at one thirteen Silvan Street in Danvers, Gloucester. I've been the Special Education Coordinator at West Parish School for the past thirteen years. Staff and parents know me as the point of contact for special education at West Parish. I've chaired hundreds of meetings, built trusting relationships, written and edited IEPs and student evaluations, and taught small ELA and math groups. I've dedicated countless hours to ensure that students, who are the most vulnerable and marginalized in this community, can see the education they deserve. I'm not perfect, but I've always cared and treated people with respect. Ask any parent or staff member who has worked with me throughout the years, and I guarantee that my reputation is beyond my per. So why am I here speaking to you today? I was informed this past March that my job was changing to an administrative role, a half-assed principal, half-program coordinator position. Without any prior knowledge, consultation regarding this decision, I was blindsided by this news. To say I was angry was an understatement. This decision was spearheaded by our new Special Education Director, Michael Jarvis. As you know, Mike is restructuring the school system to what he believes is a system that will help special education in this city. What he's doing is driving out qualified staff members to other districts and implementing a one-size-fits-all dynamic for students with disabilities. He's making rash decisions in areas that are typically planned out carefully and thoughtfully. This is not surprising. He doesn't communicate with the special education staff in a professional manner. He rarely returns phone calls and emails. He cancels meetings on a regular basis. And I've witnessed him making insensitive remarks about staff at meetings in front of other professionals. He's rude and dismissive, especially toward women. I implore all of you sitting here today to carefully examine the current state of special education in this district. I have nothing to gain by being here except to ask for your care and concern for the students of this community who cannot speak for themselves. Thank you. I'd like to, if there's no one else.
I just want to be clear that we have a policy of not having comments disparage staff members. I'm sure none of you would appreciate it. That's almost like the public came up with. I never care. It's a personnel matters to. So I understand where you're coming from, but let's be careful with our comments. Personnel matter, which you dealt with. Through those challenges.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Rex. I live at sixteen Elleno Avenue in Beverly. As you know, I'm the president of the Union of Gloucester Educators. To say that this past school year has been challenging for educators, for our families, for our students, for our administrators is the understatement of the century. Many of our dedicated staff pour their hearts into this work day in and day out, and tonight we heard from Joanne. But clearly, there are many other staff members who also do not feel listened to, whose voices have gone unheard in key decisions that affect their students, their classrooms, and their professional lives. Some of these educators have made the difficult decision to resign and leave our district, and their absence will be deeply felt. These departures are a warning sign. If we want to keep highly qualified, talented, passionate educators in our schools, we must commit to real, respectful collaboration where educators are not just informed, but meaningfully involved in the decisions that shape their work. As we look ahead to a new school year, I remain hopeful. Because the truth is, we all want what's best for our students. And the only way to achieve that is by working together with trust, with transparency, and with a shared commitment to putting our students at the very center of everything we do. Let's build the culture where every voice, especially those in the classroom, is valued and heard. That is how we move forward, and that is how we serve our students best. Thank you.
All, two, two, three, hi, Solomon. I've been teaching here quite a long time. And my problem, I want to bring to your attention, and I brought some of your attention throughout the year's attendance. We just finished this year's attendance, by the way, and what was sent to us today was spun a little bit. Instead of using eighteen to twenty-five school days, they were doing eighteen to thirty-five school days. And so the numbers are a little skewed compared to the years past. But let's put that aside. I think we all can agree that seventy-two absences is ridiculous. As a teacher trying to teach physics to these, it's seventy-two absences. Never happened. But the norm now, which I have seventy-two this year, and she passed. But she could have been a student if she was in school. Okay, that's how smart this kid is. I also have the norm now is thirty absences. Now, when I say I see the math dropping, when I say I see the sciences dropping, it's because the kids aren't in school. And we can at least agree to that. I mean, Ben Lummis was part of the National Center of Time on Learning, and you guys wanted to increase the school by three hundred hours. At least we can agree on, I agree with you. More time in school is a must. But we need to change the policy, what it used to be. Now, we've heard from staff that we were told that we can't use the old system because it's punitive. I disagree. It's not punitive, because you had seven absences per term. If you went over that, you were allowed to go just at colleges and go to committee and present your case. Why are you out for more of those? And you were allowed to get those days back. And if your attendance was better the next term, you got that taken back. You got it back. So that system was designed like the state wants, not to be punitive, but to give the chance of a kid to come back, but without a stick. There is no care here. So I just wish you guys would just, I don't know who you're getting your ideas from. And I don't really care, but we at least can agree thirty-plus absences is bringing the system down. And we need to fix that as soon as possible. That's all I have to say.
No one else? That will conclude all of the committee stages. Oh, Cynthia, I can try to speak. You can. Speak, I think. I think you should be able to be heard now.
Oh, I think that worked. Did that work?
Cynthia, can you hear us?
Yes.
If you want to speak, so you may.
Oh, can you hear me now or no?
I'd be on mute.
No, I. Oh, shoot.
Cynthia, we can't hear you. Cynthia, you want to send us your...
He says, he says that, I'm sorry.
I can hear.
Yeah, so.
Inside people can hear, so I already, please, I'll. Hold on just a second, Cynthia.
Did that work?
Cynthia, can you say something now?
Hello, I'm saying something. I unmuted myself and I can see that it says I'm talking, so I think it's on their end.
Yeah, Cynthia.
Cynthia, try talking now.
I can hear you.
Guys, can you hear me now?
Now we can. Hello, Cynthia.
Okay, sorry, I feel like it really wasn't worth all that trouble just to have me come on, but I appreciate you waiting. I just wanted to say, as I'm listening and I'm hearing my colleagues, that I just, I'm a, even though I've been in the Gloucester for, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, so excuse me why I formulate my words. But I moved up to Gloucester because of the schools and the community. And I think we're a great community. What I just wanted to say is I think where a lot of things where we can put our efforts is also talking to our city council. Like, I'm really disappointed to not see the mayor tonight. He is a member of the school committee. He's not here tonight. He also, I don't know if that's something else, but it's just one of those things where it's disappointing to see because I know the school committee is there, working hard to hear our voices. The union and we are working hard to collaborate with you. I think we're all ready for summer break and I just hope that, I don't know, I just was thinking, I appreciate that Kathy reminded everybody about the policy about not disparaging people because I think it's too easy at the end of the year on a hot day to be upset with. Because we do have justifiable grievances. It would just be nice if we could get those to City Hall to have them fund our schools more properly so we wouldn't all be in these positions where we're restructuring, which I feel like are mostly financial reasons. Anyhow, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Cynthia. I just want to be clear that Mayor had a conflict this evening, so he's unable to attend. He always attends our meetings. That's something else that he has, and I know he's with Senator State Rep, so.
Yeah, but these are on the books for a while, so I appreciate you saying it, but sometimes, you know, conflicts of interest, he knows it's on the calendar.
Our meetings are usually Wednesday, and this is Tuesday, so, you know, he could have gotten on his calendar without knowing, so. Thank you. And I just want to mention that Pete Minio is joining us by Zoom as well. And Laura will be here later. An obligation as well. Okay, so that communication. Recognitions. If they have anything they want to recognize. I went to, I have a recognition. I was at Thibault O'Malley, eighth grade. Civic's Fair. I don't remember exactly what they called it. And the kids put a lot of thought into the topic that they chose. They researched and hang up with ideas, explained what the issue is that they were concerned about. Put forth some ideas, but I found it really informative as to what they were most concerned about each one. And I got to talk to some really eighth graders who were really proud of what they did. And the families were invited as well, so it was a really great turnout at O'Malley. Okay, students are off on their summer vacation, so we do not have an advisory council. We have the consent agenda, and I just want to note that there are no minutes to approve because we approved those at our last meeting. So if they have any other items they'd like to consent agenda.
I know that we approved your consent.
Sorry.
Fall of favor, say hi.
Hi.
Thanks, Dan.
We have to do roll.
Mr. McKee.
Yes.
This text, the on the front says. Nancy. Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
We will move on to deliberations on education issues. First item of business is the Gloucester Education Foundation, and we will be hearing from Emily Segal and Ms. Titus at the middle school about something there.
Hold on. We'll hear some news around schools.
Oh, okay, sorry. After you. After you.
So, good evening, everybody. Emily, if you can hold tight to you and Titus, please. Just want to share a few, you know, there's so much going on right now in our schools. It hasn't been the last few weeks, our last meeting. Capture a few of the things here, just some of this news around the district. So. As we say in Gloucester Public Schools, everything matters. Money belongs. So, as Stacey said, I have a lot to cover tonight. I'll give some news around schools, give a hiring update. Emily Segal's here from Gloucester Education Foundation with Mike Titus reporting some pretty exciting news from GF. Amy Pasquale will lead a presentation on our summer program, both for students but also especially for our staff. We have some members of the Joint Work of Human Learning and Treatment. Here to provide a sort of a starter update as that group launches. Committee will have the final school's budget fund consideration tonight, the vote, and voting for the evaluation. So, a few things. So preschool updates. We've got graduates entering preschool class for two thousand twenty-five. There were some teachers and parents on the right. Administrators, myself on the left there. A young boy was one of the works beside, it's a colleague of all us. Preschool update, also they had some mini ponies come visit it. At preschool, so we do admission, brought three ponies, instead of a small corral there, and the kids got to pat them and brush them, talk to them. I'm not sure they fed them, I don't know about that. The audience knows about that. Even those of us who are highly allergic. These B M A's, so B M A has field day in seventeen, there's tug of war on the right. Looks like a lot of fun on the left. These veterans had field day as well on Friday afternoon. You can see some kids in distance there, and there are great T-shirts on the right, T-shirts for different classes and grade levels, rather. Plum Co. updates, they had the recognition ceremony today. It's held outside, very hot, as no one knows. Fans watch their children parade through the circle. You see the certificate of recognition from me. What you can see there is that all the students are lined up outside around the circle cheering on the fifth graders, but also having signs, you know, for each one. Lot of high fives, students and fifth graders, which is great. And Plum Co. is challenging its students to read at least three hundred minutes a summer. Be twenty minutes a day for four days a week, they'll reach that goal. Great, great goal to have, and something that all our students are doing. What age we are is reading throughout the summer. Some West Parish updates, you see on the left there, the West Parish team on the Fiesta Ball Hockey Tournament, or Hockey Tournament there. They showed some great teamwork, creation, vision, also support and respect for the teams. So we appreciate them winning, but also how they represented West Parish and the schools. They had their field day last week at West Parish. Fifth grade picnic was all, fifth grade picnic was last Friday, as well as the Science Center. And some of their summer learning activities, bingo, war, and treasure. It helps keep us still sharp over the summer. The West Parish update was the Math Olympiad. So I really appreciate all the work that me and Chumtaro support our students to join and compete in the Math Olympiad. Just a great, great outdoor students. Michael Provinsure, fifth grade, one of the top sports in the district at the level. That's a lot of fun. Well, many updates. Here's a couple pictures just from Stacey's presentation that Stacey was talking about, so really appreciate just the great work from so many of the students out there, standing, talking to, we had a whole bunch of folks, family members, like officials, city officials, and teachers who came to ask questions, curious about what our eighth grade students learned, what's their curriculum. Really appreciate one student, Thomas Merchant, who talked about third spaces. Third spaces being spaces that are beyond home and school. There are students who can gather and have a safe place to be together and do things together. Places like the YMCA or the library facility, all those sorts of things. Just like many of the many students, just giving really thoughtful solutions about some things that are really of concern to them. Early eighth grade had a dinner and DJ, dinner in Harbor Cruise with DJ last weekend it was, and then today the eighth graders had their field day, and a field day tradition for the class of two thousand twenty-nine, which is our eighth graders, at Sageport Park. The black T-shirts they're wearing. Well, it was a great COVID choice for today. It says Gloucester Fisherman on the front, and the class of eight going on the back. And thank you, PTO, for helping like all those T-shirts for everybody, for all students. So that was a great, great, it was a great. And as you want, we read in the record, answer folks, you remember earlier this year Rear Admiral Potenberg from Navy Command, Naval Service Training Command, came to visit our JRC program. And as you know, this is our first year of the NDC, NDCC program, which is working toward becoming a Navy JRC program. And as he reported then, he was very impressed with the commitment, very impressed with support of administrators and leadership, the mayor who was there, and school members, really appreciative of the band that was playing. And so we just recently received a letter from him, which really captures his recognition and is also what he clearly got from the cadets that day. And she marked out, so, "I'm reading, leadership and cadets of Gloucester High School, Navy JRC. Thank you for the warm welcome during my recent visit to your NJRTC unit. It was a real pleasure to be with the team, spend time with the cadets. The pride, professionalism, and energy on display were impressive. Clear your cadets are learning more than just procedures and protocol, and developing confidence, leadership, and a strong sense of responsibility. That doesn't happen by accident. A direct result of the environment you created and the example you set. What you're building there matters. You're giving young people tools to grow with thoughtful, capable citizens, who will lead whatever path they choose. That kind of work has a lasting impact, both on them, on the communities they'll serve. Thanks again for everything you do, very respectfully. Rear Admiral M.T. Potenberg." So just that captures so many things that we, our staff, our teachers, our schools are trying to instill and help our young people learn. And Rear Admiral, who is in charge of all naval training activities across the nation, recognize that in our cadets, in our program. But he really captured, I think, a lot of us are trying to do what we do very successfully in our school and in our students. Always have work to do on these, but just want to share that with the committee and the public. It's high praise from someone who's seen lots of programs all over.
He was a very impressive speaker to the kids as well. Thank you for your presentation.
That was, and copies of one, we were saying. The last day of school is on Thursday. There's a release dismissal times, as I was wondering. The stock photo on the left was a pretty good photo. That's a lot. And also, Ben, we just recently posted on our Facebook pages, announced that Ben spent the health awareness, which is very, very important at many levels for our young men, parents, fathers, grandfathers, boys. But also notable, because we want to shout out, appreciate Gavin's cookie. He just tuned, created this flyer. We really wanted to make sure that his peers and adult males in the community really take this to heart. Help on the awareness, aware of it. And really have some key messages on that flyer there, so really proud of Gavin for not only getting interested in this, but also really using leadership on, trying to help the community. Thank you, Gavin, for taking this, taking this on. So I'll move on to staffing update. And provide some headlines. So some good news and also challenging as well. So the headlines here just start, we're in much better shape for hiring staff than we were one year ago. I'll give some examples of that. And really folks and teachers here, teachers and related staff, okay. Elementary special education programs, so Beeman is fully staffed for teachers. Has not happened this time of year in the recent past, okay, so really credit to a whole bunch of folks on that. Beeman is fully staffed at this point for teachers. Chiefs Veterans is fully staffed, more than one teachers. You know that's a real challenge this past year on that. Were fully staffed until I believe it was April, for all the new teachers at these veterans, and now continue into the new year, thankfully. The man is hired Special Education Coordinator, sorry about that. And grade level special education teachers are all hired in O'Malley. The only teacher opening at this point at Gloucester High School is one hundred and eighty-one, eighty-one, or a teacher. So that's good news, and I said, again, much better shape in terms of teacher hiring than four years ago. Things do change. Explain one recent change in a moment, okay. At the same time, most of our teacher openings, I think this is almost all of our teacher openings. I might be missing one or two here. But these are most of our teacher openings, and you'll see the ones in italics are the belt positions, okay, so working really hard on these. So Beeman doesn't have any openings, as I said, in terms of teachers. He's veterans, you'll see the pattern you'll see here, or special education, related services. And we'll also see ML from teachers as well as all of their. So he's veterans, the openings they have are two openings in terms of teachers, future language pathologist, and grade level special education teacher, he's fourth grade. Plum Co., grade level special education teacher, and then a music teacher, that's a very recent departure. Or we said, now, I should say. West Parish, also grade level special education teacher, and the principal and psychologist. And so you'll see across these veterans, Tom West, we have three grade level special education teachers out in common. Something that we're, these folks, I'll talk about hiring in a moment and the efforts that are being made. It's a very poor vision, and I don't mean make slight, I just want to be, as I've been with staffing updates, sort of just clear and honest about it. O'Malley, Special Education Program teachers, and the, so these are program teachers, special education programs. This is probably, this is our most challenged, at this point, our most challenged situation. Autism, the autism program, New York Behavioral Program, and the life skills program, all of them are still, and looking forward to get those. Science teacher, and long-term subs in science, ultimate learner, and also one of the learner education. Long-term subs, staff are going to leave for the year. Long-term subs staff are going to leave for the year. Then the last one, Gloucester High School, I mentioned the model of learning teacher, also the dean of students, student operations. So this one is, is replacing one of the principal positions. All of these are in process, in hiring process, some cases we need offers that weren't, that were, um, were, uh, fused or they chose other options, okay? We're seeing a lot of, we have experienced in a few situations, particularly, um, but not only on administrators, um, also I think psychology position, um, where someone gets offered from us, returns their current district and gets a, gets a better offer, if you want to know. There's that sort of, um, negotiation happening, going on right now. Um, or that could be in a new district too, another district that they're applying to, um, that sort of competition is, has been rare up until these times. But we're seeing more and more, and none, more competitive than this year. Really challenging. But again, again, this is sort of a two-part story, three parts, but really do appreciate, we have, you know, principals are doing a lot of hiring and, and all the blocking tackling in terms of outreach and sending appointments, that's what stuff. Teachers, other staff are helping out, committees, um, people really get, um, you know, how important it is to get great colleagues. Um, we recently now, I recently announced an effort to have, um, staff, a referral program, so we can get, um, a lot of bonus if you refer someone who's hired, okay? Um, that'll go out to all staff tomorrow. Um, I have to make sure all staff know about that. Or email down online, I sent it to, not all staff, but just the school staff, intentional, in my intention today. Um, so all staff will know about that referral program. And that's a, that's designed, you know, many of our staff come from close connections, from networks and colleagues, the people who are born, so really want to support our staff in getting, uh, through the referrals from, through our pipeline. And hoping that will help quite a bit. Now, we'll say that, um, you know, no hiring happens alone, district, and really no work happens. And for any, for any of us to, to point out or take credit on our own, name on any one person is inaccurate, simplifies the complexity of our schools, work of our schools. And, uh, and what it is that, it's there. And that goes towards hiring, that's improve our, our, um, servicing or support, especially the education programs, that goes with instruction, everything, that's, goes, we're trying to coach folks that you better, whatever position that is. It actually takes all people, um, working together, that means our responsibility shares, shares away. And, um, so we'll keep operating that way and get better at communication and working together with folks. But our responsibility for our school to run it really well is always shared. It's too complicated, too difficult work and too complicated to, um, to, to take that person, any position, should do it all, okay? And it's the complexity of, of public schools these days is reflected in, in how hard hiring is. Um, that's, that's us and also some public in ways and new ways of proving folks and getting folks to, as I said, I've had good work on hiring so far, but still work to be done. Any questions?
I just saw a timeline, so, um, I don't know when our next meeting is, um. If it's usually sometime in July or sometimes later in July, just, I mean, keep us updated. I mean, without no deliberation, but just information.
Yeah, yeah, as I do typically, if certain things give you updates along the way, it can, it can, it may not yet.
I mean, I know a lot of work that's done over the summer. And are there any of these positions, do anything, be contracted services, like the
Yeah, great question.
Like, so that we're not
Speechless, I guess, that all this can be.
Right.
Um, that's really of these where we, where we, you know, possible.
Yep.
Um, it has been passed, it can be, um, prefer not do that, trying to get away from that, but that's possible to get with me. And psychologists could be, but again, that's something that we don't do very often. You keep, that, that's sort of appropriate in terms of evaluating things, you know? Um, for, I, for, we provide B services, okay? Um, but again, that's something we haven't rolled too much of and we're about to know. We recently hired, you know, there were two openings, two psychologists openings, I've done this for one of these veterans. Um, and, um, uh, and these veterans just hired someone, okay? Um, I know West Parish, he did it very actively and I think, um, I know, um, recently, you know, he had offers. These are all, and as I say, these are all in different, in different places. I'm involved in a number of these as well, uh, keeping our close tabs with principals on how things are going. Um, and, uh,
One more question, both question. Um, have all these jobs on post and are any in progress for engineers?
Yeah, uh, I, I, I think they, they all, they are, or should be, um, and the bus teacher can post, and that's the most recent one. Um, uh, sometimes they fall off our top list there, so we put it back up on the top again. Um, there's one, actually, I, I do know that, um, that I did not put up here, which is a DCBA, um, is moving on. Um, they will post that shortly, it should be posted tomorrow. And, yeah, that as well, that's, that's the only one I can think of that I missed on this, this presentation. Um, and we're talking, talking teachers, related services, there are, I believe we have no apparel openings at this point, and we'll say, changes happen. And so, we'll typically do our reservations in the summertime at some point. Um, so this, this is, this is very much, very fluid. Um, from the hiring and then
Right. Yeah, I know, did, did we try a couple of job fairs? I think we talked about earlier in the year, any success come out of those at all?
We went to a job fair at BU, we got a lot of contacts, we actually hired a fifth grade student on at Becker's from that job fair. Um, and we went to one that was our state, not as successful, um, which was a long way from Gloucester, but weren't a lot of people wanted to move that far away from, so we have had some and at least one success, so.
Also thought that for their graduates, I mean, this is our, our, for our feedback to them, felt a little bit late in the cycle. It seemed like a lot of the graduates had already at that point gotten jobs. Um, so that was I will hand it over to, please close this down, give me one second. And, um, glad, very glad to have Gloucester Education Operations Executive Director Emily Seagull here. Also Mike Titus, Principal Mike Titus will be joining us as well, um, to give us a couple of really important things.
Thank you. Hi, Mike.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Uh, so for those in the room and those on Zoom, I'm Emily Seagull, I'm the executive director of Gloucester Education Foundation. Uh, thank you to the committee for inviting Mike and I tonight. And Mike, I don't know if you can do a formal introduction, I'm sure everyone here knows you, but
Yep, Mike Titus, uh, Principal over at O'Malley Middle School. Um, one quick thing, just update, sort of late breaking news. Um, we actually do have the autism, uh, position and science position, um, filled, so we're in even a better position than we saw there, so.
As I said, the fluid, and there's
Yes.
Thank you, Mike, and I agree with all of those.
Great news. Okay, I'm going to share my screen. Oh gosh. Okay, um, so, um, Mike and I were asked to come tonight to give a brief update, um, about a new project that Gloucester Foundation is exploring in partnership with the Gloucester Schools and in particular with O'Malley, which is reimagining the O'Malley Courtyard. You'll see the word courtyard in quotes because most kids there don't call it that, they call it out front. Like, it doesn't, people only call it the courtyard, that name doesn't really resonate, but we're calling it that as a placeholder just because we don't know what to call it. And saying, we want to redo the out front, doesn't sound great. Um, so probably this will be a very familiar image to most people of, uh, that large concrete slab, this is a small part of it, uh, and a big brick wall. And, uh, this picture, I think, a thousand words, uh, about why we might want to do this. But just to share. Okay, so, um, GEF is celebrating its twentieth year. In the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, we were founded twenty years ago. And this big milestone felt like a big opportunity for us to take on a really ambitious project. And I joined, joined GEF four years ago and two things were true four years ago. GEF was thinking about what's something really big we can do in our twentieth year, how can we rally support from the community with that milestone? And, gosh, the outside of O'Malley is an unwelcoming environment for kids, for staff, and for families. Like, both those things have been true my four years here, and I know that they date back about fifty-two years before that. Um, so this idea has come, um, kind of been bubbling up at GEF for a number of years, and really in the past couple of months, taken shape as something that, um, our board really likes to embark on. And I want to be really clear, this is not a landscaping project. We are not looking to plant a garden, although gardens are wonderful and perhaps something that will be included. Um, the idea is to really reimagine this space to create a really dynamic, student-centered space for learning, for teaching, for movement, for connection. Um, it should be an outdoor classroom, um, broadly speaking, I don't mean like a little outdoor classroom with desks. I mean, the whole space should be a space for teaching and learning, a hub for activities, um, and a really welcoming gathering place for the whole school community. Um, Adrian, if you were at the Arts Festival back in May. We'll try the Arts Festival. So we did the Arts Festival in this space this year because the Sawyer Free Library, we just, we were both closed uh, for renovation, so we didn't do it in our typical downtown venue. And the opportunity of this space is really incredible. Um, we had hundreds and hundreds of people out that day, um, enjoying that space. It was lively, it was activated, it was full of kids, it was full of art and performance and music. And the space has incredible potential to be more than it is right now for our kids. So, um, why the courtyard? Um, I'm going to take this and then Mike, I'll pass to you to talk about what we're learning, does that make sense?
Sounds good.
Okay, so why the courtyard, also known as the out front? Many kids have called it the prison yard, I've heard more than a few teachers and alumni also referred to it as a prison yard, the concrete jungle, the concrete slab. Um, it's a space that needs obviously a new name, we know that. Um, but why the courtyard? There were a lot of different things for our twentieth year we could have chosen to focus on. Um, so one is just like, it's a really glaringly obvious area that needs improvement. I don't think anybody can approach that building and not, uh, and be satisfied with what we're currently providing for students out there. Um, and an opportunity to create a much more functional and welcoming space that serves students better. Really important to GEF, um, is that it impacts every O'Malley student every day. So for our tenth anniversary, GEF, uh, totally renovated the band room at O'Malley, which is awesome and serves dozens of kids, hundreds of kids a year. But it's tucked in the basement, it's a little far away, um, and it's not something that if you're not like really into band and music, that you necessarily would have recognized as a big change. Not to denigrate that project, that was a really important project, and ten years later, that room still works beautifully. But this is something that all six hundred twenty kids at O'Malley, their families dropping them off, their bus drivers dropping them off, parents that are at the rink at eight AM on Saturday mornings for skating lessons, can experience a, a more welcoming space. Um, it's a big upfront capital investment, um, this is going to be a big project and we'll get to some numbers. But it doesn't have ongoing staffing costs associated with it. So it's a really good fit for GEF because we can raise money for something really big. We can invest in it. Obviously, the space needs to be maintained, but it doesn't have every year annual costs of tens, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Highly visible, uh, lots of folks can get behind this, and we think it's an investment that will serve the city for the rest of the come. So, Mike, I'm going to pass to you to talk about kind of what we've started doing and what we're learning.
Sure. So, um, first, ju- just want to mention that I, I can't emphasize, uh, what Emily has said enough so far, just a, it, it is one of the first things I actually heard and not, uh, directly, but just in conversations when I started as the principal two years ago, is just mentioning the out front and everybody has ideas, but everybody knows it's a monumental task. Um, so this really is just an opportunity that, um, I think could impact not just the six hundred and twenty kids, you know, that go to O'Malley in a given year, but year after year, another two hundred kids as they continue to come through the school. So it's, you're talking about a generational impact here. Um, so what have we done so far? Um, we, we are trying to engage with some initial stakeholders. Um, you, you'll see that there's other folks we need to talk to, but, um, coming up kind of late in the year, we talked to the people that were closest to us. Uh, so that's folks within the district, right? So there was an initial meeting, um, where we did look up some, at some plans that were from about fifteen years ago. Um, got a GPS alumni to help us out, um, and we sent a survey out to all the students, we got about four hundred and eighty-two responses. One of the questions was, would you, um, be willing to partake in a focus group to dive more into this? Um, and we were able to speak to ten students so far, there's more that we're willing to, but, you know, we have, uh, this is just what we've been able to get done in this time. And also, um, a group of, uh, O'Malley staff to come see what those responses were and provide their own insights, uh, preliminarily. Um, kind of in the stage of dreaming big. A little bit of what we learned from the survey with the students, um, majority of students really noting that it's, it's a place for play and a place for sports. Um, so that's really, um, important for a majority of the students. Also noting, um, there's really a lack of shade in seating, right? So what we're seeing already is, um, this really does need to be a multi-use space. Okay, both for, um, relaxation, getting, you know, a place to be with our friends and socialize, but also to have, um, get that energy out that middle schoolers are so well-known for. Um, students interested in the learning space, um, and, you know, twenty-two percent said they want the space to be used by clubs and after-school events. Obviously, we have a large portion of our students who do O'Malley Academy and probably have ideas about how that could be used for there. Um, one important thing in the open-ended responses, um, a lot of folks, a lot of kids looking for playground equipment. I think sometimes we, uh, or think that middle schools are too old for that, um, but that was also reflected very clearly in the focus groups when we mentioned that too. It was widely agreed upon that they would like something for that. Um, more, more shade, uh, in the form of trees, greenery color, uh, and they'd like the space to be better maintained. Here's just some quotes, um, straight from babes, as they say, um, I'll let you just take a look at those, but, um, one right at the bottom, uh, particularly on some of those foggy rainy days we can have, uh, up in Gloucester, let's make it look less sad. Um, the concrete doesn't hold up well in that weather, so, um, you know, it is a large area and what we're trying to do is find the balance between, um, how do we make it more, uh, useful, right? And, and what the kids need and also, uh, creating a more welcoming, um, beautiful entrance to the school itself. Here again, uh, that seating is a really, uh, important element for the kids, um, better maintenance of it, more color and more nature. Those are just some really big themes that kept coming up in the survey. This is the focus group, right? So this is where we were able to get into a little bit more, um, detail with the students, uh, seeing what they were thinking. Going to hit the, very clear in, in both sessions, middle schoolers are not too old for playgrounds. Um, one of the things that kind of came out is that, even though it's a large space, it can kind of feel small because it's not clearly delineated what activities are happening where, um, you know, so this idea of, well, I want to sit and relax, but I might get hit in the head with a soccer ball. Um, so that's kind of the idea of how do we use the space more effectively, um, and subdivide it. We've talked about the color, um, it is, it is a windy sunny space right now, and, and students are sort of looking for a little bit of protection from that. Um, a big takeaway, uh, that to really sum it all up is right here down at the bottom, um, and I'm paraphrasing, but it's almost a direct quote from the focus group that, um, what they wanted us to remember is that it is a space for students. Um, and not for adults, right? So that what, when we're making those decisions down the road, keeping in mind, is this what the kids want or is this what an adult, what some adults might want? And for me, as their principal, that's just, I'm going to have to really keep that as my mantra, that this has got to be about what the students are saying they want. Um, so this came from the staff, all right? Uh, there's some opportunities and there's some challenges. Um, we do have the chance to move some things around. Um, we have, again, the, uh, some things that just aren't being utilized effectively. Uh, things like the, the, the backyard growers raise beds, um, there, here, we got a little bit more into some of the beautification, which I do think is an important element, um, looking to bring back the butterfly garden, um, historically, the anchor is, uh, you know, goes Um, historically, the anchor is, uh, you know, goes part and parcel with O'Malley lore. Maybe is there a way we can make that more, um, prominent? And then some really just big thinking around, um, you know, the traffic pattern and be, and some concerns with safety there, and is this an opportunity to look at that? Um, again, real early stages on things like that. Um, you know, challenges, it's used by a lot of kids. Um, and as we're thinking about an outdoor learning space, we do need to keep in mind that it is mostly, if a big part of the day it is used for recess. Um, and so how does that interact with, you know, wanting to bring classrooms out there? Um, and then, you know, this is a little bit more of the practical pieces. Anything we do out there that is our main entryway, it does need to be able to be cleared, uh, of snow removal, despite the, the fact that snowstorms are, seem to be coming, uh, less and less frequent. We obviously did have some this year, uh, so that needs to be taken into consideration. And just making sure, um, that the infrastructure itself, okay, uh, can handle some of these ideas and wouldn't eat up the budget just making repairs in order to, uh, add in any structures or equipment that we may want to.
Right. So as far as what comes next, um, you know, we, you know, we spoke to five teachers and ten kids, right? We heard from a lot of kids in their survey, but like this is, we've just brushed the surface. We're starting to hear from the most important users. So we know there's gonna be a lot more take holder engagement on this, um, in the coming weeks and months. Uh, more students and staff to be sure, but of course, D P W, um, alumni of this school. I wanna just recognize Aurelia Harrison, who was a Buster High alum, who has, uh, just finished her freshman year at Vassar and is interning this summer and helped put a lot of this together, helped with the focus group survey. Um, but talking to alumni who were at that school about things that they liked or didn't like when they were there and looking back at a little bit of perspective is helpful. Um, and then talking to local experts, we have so many talented people in the community, landscape architects, um, landscape contractors, designers. So pulling in those folks, again, this is all for preliminary information. This is before anyone is hired, this is just getting lots and lots of user data. Um, Aurelia is helping research other projects like this one and going to visit some sites this summer. Um, and so we would welcome school community members, administrators, teachers, um, to come along on some of those visits to other places that have done parts of this, right? There's places that have done a playground, places that have done a courtyard, different things. Um, then what we really need to do, and this is where it gets tricky, right? There's some chicken and egg here. We need to start translating some of the preliminary initial ideas into concept drawings. We have some folks, some landscape architects who have volunteered to help with that and do that pro bono. We don't wanna commit to any ideas too early, right? Later on, a designer will have to be hired, architects, all of that. But if we don't put down Smokey's initial ideas on paper, it's really hard to raise money and get people excited about this. And G E F's job is to raise funds and raise awareness and excitement about this project. So we need to put some ideas on paper so people can visualize it. We're talking about doing a video, um, that might have picture a kid in the courtyard right now talking about an idea and then like a drawing appearing on the screen with the voiceover on the blank kind of template of, of the, of the courtyard, right? So creative ideas that can help kind of bring the imagination to life without people feeling like we're committing to a design too early, because that would be a mistake. Um, we need to get some room cost estimates. Um, and, uh, we're gonna need to prioritize and what are the highest priorities of the design and what do those things cost? Um, and that's, that's a job for professionals that no one in this room can do. Um, and then G E F's role really, we need to start talking up this project with donors, with businesses to generate buzz and excitement, because our goal is to launch a big campaign in our twentieth year with our twentieth anniversary gala, which is on November sixth at the cruise port. Um, our amazing committee for that voluntary committee for that campaign, uh, for that gala said, let's try to raise a quarter million dollars that night. I think that's wonderful, it's super ambitious, a lot of work will have to happen to do that, but I love that they're thinking big. So the idea for the gala would be to raise two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to kick this off, and then for the whole campaign that follows to raise a million in total. And to have a million dollars to go towards this project, we may have to say, we'll just phase one of this project if it turns into something that is, but costs more than a million dollars, which could easily happen. Um, but I think to Mike's point, sort of thinking about how to balance the, the practical and the pragmatic with the big dreams is gonna be part of the trickery. So, um, those are our next steps and, uh, Mike and I are happy to take questions, to which we may not have answers, but we'll do our best. Yes, sorry.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. One, uh, adjacent to the concrete, or we thought, I mean, like pointing that out, is that kind of like running down towards the bucket bank? Is that what this?
Yeah, so both staff and students talked about spaces that are like not right on the concrete, but that are nearby. So like the grass just past the ring, or there's a grassy area with trees where the bike racks are across from the cafeteria doors. Like, how do we take advantage of things that are already there? There's grass and tree right there. Is there a way to safely use that as a quiet reading space, for example? So those kinds of spaces.
Uh, the other question I had was, uh, what about contractors? I mean, it's a G E F project, but having been involved in a few things like this, what if contractors wanted this? You know, there's plenty of contractors that might say, hey, I went to O'Malley, I'd like to be involved in it. Is there some sort of, they'd be willing to help out for a day of, and their process?
Yes, this is gonna take a lot of volunteer and pro bono power in addition to money, so absolutely. Um, we're fortunate, G E F, uh, and the Chamber partnered for the, um, C B T E sponsorship work over the past couple of years. And so we've built some relationships with the contractors in town through that. And I think that we have the, the opening, especially the people that are alums, uh, those kids went here, um, to take advantage, uh, in the best possible way of their talents and their skills and their equipment.
It's definitely a project that I can see the, the larger community getting behind and saying, wow, thank goodness we're doing this, and it's a great idea, so.
I don't have any questions, it's just so overwhelmingly awesome to think that something like this is coming. Um, just, I guess, a comment, so, um, when I was on the Essex Tech School Committee, we built a school and developing a lot of areas was something we had to think about how, how we were gonna afford to do that and what do we really want versus what the budget allowed, which was a difficult conversation. And I just think about the conversations that we had about bringing in community that donated to certain sections, and maybe their name was in a brick somewhere near that section, so that you have, you're bringing in either businesses or people that just wanna donate to education or do it in a memory of somebody. So I see maybe an approach like that helping. Um, I know Foster Foundation is superior in fundraising. And I'm just thinking of how much you really can do in that very large area, and if you're gonna do it, I want it to bang, right?
Yeah.
But of course, that costs a lot of money.
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering, like, what, I'm curious to hear, not tonight honestly, but how this unfolds and how we can get the community to come on board and, and make this really, really awesome. Because it is a, I, I went to O'Malley, I remember sitting on the bench thinking, wow, we don't even have an overhead if it's raining out, we can't go outside, right?
Right.
So, and that was fifty years ago.
Yeah. Um, yeah, so I think all, all ideas will be on the table. Um, certainly like buy a brick and things like that for pathways or plaque some benches, all of those things. I think, you know, we have some really, really great folks on our gala committee, and I wanna just call out Rachel Rosallo, who is such a talent and thinking creatively, not just about fundraising, but she's really good at thinking about how do you engage the community and families in fundraising? And she is, I get an email a day with a new idea, like she is phenomenal, um, and she had this great idea about, I'm not gonna say it, I don't want to give it a surprise, but some really good creative ideas along those lines. I also had a great call with a donor recently who's in the G H S class of seventy-nine, the major seventy-nine, so his fiftieth is coming up. And he was one, in one of the first classes to graduate from O'Malley. And he was saying that maybe like his class for their fiftieth gift, they're starting to think about that now, it's three, four years away. Could they make a gift towards a project like this, right? So thinking about alumni class gifts, things like that. Um, yeah, I think we're gonna need any and all ideas. Um, it's funny, some people have said, why would you need a million dollars to like redo the outside of a school? And then people have been like, a million dollars isn't gonna go anywhere, it's gonna be snatched up in a minute. So, uh, I tend to think the latter, that a million won't go very far, so maybe a year from now, I'll be here and say, we're working on the second billion. But, uh, but I, I feel good and confident that G E F can, we have the challenge of, we need to raise money for this big project, but also continue to raise money for all the other things to fund. I see some of our grantees here, and they work really, really hard on the programs that we're already funding. And so we wanna continue to sustain what we're doing, fund some new things that come up in the next year, but put our really big fundraising muscle into this big project.
Well, you know, people didn't think we were gonna have a new high school field inside, and we were able to pump it up with a lot of help of the G F A A.
Yep.
So this community gives a lot of kids, I see her steam. It's awesome. Very grateful for you coming forward and Foster Foundation coming forward and being able to present this.
And I just wanna thank Mike, um, last week of school, and as we just heard, like a very long and challenging year. And Mike has put a lot of energy in his last weeks of school into making sure that the survey went out, that students were in focus groups, that he got a few teachers and to talk to us early. Um, and Mike, that's no small thing, um, at a busy end of the year, so really appreciate that. And I know that the energy to do this, I see it bubbling up from the school, and we really need that, we need that champion.
Okay, you have a question?
Yeah, I think I have a few questions, um, well, you know, a few thoughts too. Um, well, I, in, initially, I, I just have to say thank you. Thank you for, for taking this on, uh, you know, for, for our children's sake and, uh, it, can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Okay, good, yeah, and, and, um, first thing, do you have a timeline in mind? Or is it just a matter of how much money we can get, how fast?
Um, it's a good question. So, um, my goal, I'm gonna kick myself for saying this on a recorded public meeting, my goal would be to raise the full million by June thirtieth of next year, right? Like in this fiscal year, our fiscal's the same as the district, so by, you know, by June thirtieth to raise that, we, we may be way off the mark from that, right? So I think we'll have to kind of reassess following our gala, I think that'll be one key milestone, where are we?
Yeah.
And then sort of mid, mid-winter, early spring, where are we? Um, I, I wouldn't, not that we need to wait around to raise all the money before we can get started, but, you know, the processes of, of bidding and hiring people and things like that, um, I, I would wanna make sure we have, um, a good base of the funding locked in before we begin any of that. So I don't have a timeline, but my thinking is that the, any like real design work is a, is a good year away. Um, or nine months away, somewhere like that.
Yeah, and then I was also wondering, you mentioned site visits for other projects, do you have anything in particular in mind?
I don't. So Aurelia has been, been looking at stuff, and, um, I know it was really helpful. Because of the focus groups now, we have a better sense of some of the things that people are looking for. So that's gonna help direct Aurelia in thinking about where to look. The playground thing came as a total surprise, I'm like middle schoolers, down. Every kid in the focus groups and dozens of kids in the survey said, we want some kind of, of, we wanna climb, we wanna swing. So, um, we're not gonna turn that whole space into a playground, we know that, it has many other uses. Um, but being really creative and thinking about how to meet that need, um, so that, that changes a little bit where we might look. But, um, I know at which, uh, middle and high school, recently we did like an outdoor courtyard area. So that might be just a quick starting point of somewhere to look. Also, right in our own community, um, I'm spending a lot of time over at Iggy's Veterans Outfront Space and looking at this done there. Um, because it's beautiful and simple.
Yeah, they, they mentioned, they mentioned soccer fields, and it seems like they have like a miniature soccer field there, AstroTurf.
Yep, it came up in a focus group.
Yeah, yeah, and then I, um, you know, this is probably more for like Principal Titus, if he's still on the line. Um, is he? Oh, yeah, so, yeah, you know, I, I'm, I'm wondering about tie-ins with the students, you know, um, at least, you know, getting them, you know, e- either quasi-involved, like, like coming up with creative ideas, just, you know, as, as an educational exercise at least. And also maybe even tying in the, um, the school newspaper, the, uh, what is it called, Cherry Street?
The Cherry Street Journal, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Cherry Street Journal, and, and maybe have them write an article about the project, you know, just, just wondering about like, you know, always tying in kids to, to like, you know, have buy-in, like, like you did with the surveys and all that stuff.
Yeah, and, and, um, as I, as I agree with you a hundred percent. And I think, um, as the project gets underway and with the fundraising and as we, as it develops more, um, I think we get a better sense of how to continue to pull the students in to, um, you know, the project and sort of as, um, you know, there's, I think there's more room for feedback, more, uh, room for input from them. And, um, I think it would be great to maybe even get some kids to report on the gala and the whole process of, you know, what we're doing. So, um, yeah, I thi- I think, you know, there's gonna be, so I think, uh, we had of the students who did the survey, um, a little, I think it was right around ten percent of them wanted to be on a focus group. So that was obviously more kids than we could get to in the last week, but, so there's a genuine excitement, I think, in, of, of students for this as well. So I look forward to thinking through how we continue to keep them involved and engaged with it.
Awesome, thank you.
Just wanna thank, um, Emily, um, to look for ideas earlier. Um, and, uh, I have to consider some of the ones came on this one, as soon as it came on this one, people lit up. I think that's because people really care, teach it in O'Malley. Um, and, and I always been a school teacher, so I care a lot about middle school and, and, and the value and the excitement, the energy and the growth those kids are experiencing in certain ways. Um, and, uh, and it's just a clear need, it's a need that is everything's describing and, and Mike would be able to go and positive impact on your O'Malley students for decades to come, for the whole community. You know, it's so, so hot, you're so visible, um, it's just, uh, it's great, great, I really appreciate G E F's leadership on it. Um, a couple of things is, it is all, it's got this challenging aspect of it, it's, it's highly used. And we wanna, um, you know, if, if, if you have unused space, it's one thing, but it's a highly used space, and we wanna maintain some uses, but enhance them. And enhance also the beauty, it's all, like, I love that kind of kids that you make it better looking, more colorful, maybe natural to a style. Um, so that's a really, it's a good challenge to have, but not a small challenge. Um, you know, and, and it's another example of, with, with leadership, we can take out great things. We can build great things for our students, um, and for our community, and this is another example why we do it, you know? Um, thanks to G E F and thanks to a lot of U members and all, all people who are gonna come. But, uh, so I'm just excited about that.
And I just wanna add, we have G E F also a school of fish that are there. We already have a sense of something different, something more attractive, exciting that they had quite handed. Um, and this will be just another way to kind of keep things moving along, um, showing that we care about their community and this space and create a really lovely new feel of a community. It's just, what do I do out here? I can, I can imagine the playground was funny that you found that interesting, that they want playground, but, you know, as a fifth, as having a fifth grader go to O'Malley, the first thing they say is, there's nowhere to do what we used to do. And, and it takes the sixth graders quite a while to figure out what they are gonna do in the space. What a difference that school fish made, nothing.
And there's, there's another, another phase will be installed in September of that. And then we take your funding for a thirty-year block, so there'll be two more phases of that that go up, probably before ground is broken up and anything with the, the lower part of the courtyard, so. You know, it's just that little ray of happiness and concrete. There is a soccer ball stuck in it right now. We're here for one to get there.
Working on it, yeah.
Get a ladder up there that they got and tennis ball.
Thank you, thank you, Mike.
Yep, you're welcome, thank you, everybody.
Pass it off to Amy Maschero to talk about some programs.
Two presentations, the first one is, um, some of the programs, some of learning and professional development activities around the district. Um, we're gonna talk a little bit about the special education summer, uh, programming, the elementary school literacy and math program. Uh, we have an engineering coding program that reads four and five. Um, we'll talk a little bit about what's happening at O'Malley and the high school, and then on to professional development that's available. Looks like no one did that. Okay, um, so special education program, this is, is the program that's required by I U Ps. It's written into students' I U Ps, it's first, it's through preschool through grade, through twenty-two years old. Um, it'll, it'll start right after the fourth, on July seventh, and run into August. It will be at East Veterans, and they'll also be tutoring at East Veterans, O'Malley and the high school. So there are programs that will be running, um, for students to go the entire time. And then there are other students that just get tutoring, it might be reading two times thirty a week or whatever it might be, um, according to their. There's approximately ninety-eight students, um, invited into this program. And, uh, Trina Sutera, who is the program leader at East Veterans, will be overseeing the program, so.
Is that the normal amount of students? Is that higher?
Um, that's about what we have, yes. I, I'd have to check, um, last year we might have. That includes tutoring, and it also, these are the number of students that are invited, some decline. Some might be just speech and language services a couple of times a week. And then we have our summer learning program and this is not necessarily students on I U Ps. This is for kind of that tier two intervention. It's a summer learning program run fully by Amy Matola. She has run it now for the fourth or fifth year and she, it's amazing what she does with this program. This year, because we do have a short summer, it is only going to be four weeks instead of our traditional five. But it's fully staffed and ready to go. And we partner with the Cape and YMCA so that there are 50 slots of, that we have openings for about 125 students in the entire program. But there's openings for 50 of those students to go to YMCA in the afternoon. So it becomes a full day program. We pass them there and the parents pick them up. And then on the Friday of that week, they get to go to the camp center for a day. So it's really a lovely, lovely opportunity. We are not turning anybody down. I know 50 spots. I, the first few years I was here, I thought every year for more spots, but because of licensing, they cannot come more. But we, we are filling the slots, but we are not turning kids away really. So it seems to be just the sweet spot. We also, one of the classrooms, we will have a M L or English learning classroom as well for newcomers, part of the sample. We also have our summer engineering coding camp. This is run also at East Veterans. We have, so the three levels, the first level is our summer learning for I U P students. The middle level is that summer academy. And then on our top floor at East Veterans, we have the Gordon Summer Engineering Coding Club Camp. On this pre camp, it's sponsored by the Gordon Foundation, has, sponsors us and is run by Winery Wenzel and Erin Scholde Meyer. We do an amazing job getting the kids in here. They do two weeks, two week sessions. Do kinds of engineering tasks and get excited about learning. And then at O'Malley, we have the O'Malley Academy going on. They have additional offerings of getting ready for middle school. We have a summer, it's so students are invited. Similar to our elementary portion, they come for additional instruction in L A and B L A and mathematics. That's overseen by, that we miss Andrea and they'll come each day and get some tutoring and skill building and then have some other activities to do as well. Both programs, actually all programs, we are able to provide lunch and breakfast thankfully to them.
Students are, that are invited to that?
Of course, academic who's invited, similar to the elementary learning, summer learning. It's for students that are kind of that tier two intervention and just need a lecture. Our summer, summer academic programs at the high school, there are five different pathways to recover credits. Students who need to recover credits based on their performance within the school year. There's in-person, online credit recovery. There's in-person full-time, a full semester course at G H S. There's direct instruction for E L learners. Credit recovery courses through RACE program and then individualized tutors for students recovering. Our elementary math coaches, every year it's been a transition for a while to do a book study. This year's book study for the math teachers, the math coaches are universal design for learning and mathematics instruction of K through five. And you've heard of Katie Dovak before. She did the A I training earlier this year. She will be one of the people we have on November 4th offering a different, different opportunities for teachers to take professional development. But they're very excited to look at U D L for mathematics instruction at the elementary level. And then one of our math coaches, Minnie Shuatero, is offering a summer research group to really work and explore inclusive and collaborative practices to increase students' access to their problems. So she's put out for other elementary math teachers to join her in that research. And they are hopefully going to come up with some sort of paper and possibly publish. It's also happening this summer. And then for summer professional development, we are, the district is offering a mentor course through Rebus Consulting. We are in the process of revamping our mentor program for new teachers. So this course is a course that's taught by Carol Gregory through Rebus Consulting. And we're going to kind of revamp the topics we cover in mentoring and then make it more interactive. So, so far we have 24 teachers signed up for the course. We have 30 available slots. So if anybody out there wants to take, take the course, please log on the front line and sign up. But in addition to taking the course, this group is going to reshape the, the way we do mentoring so that it becomes more supportive and collaborative and really focus on strong instructional practices. So that's an exciting thing that's happening in August. Another thing, not as exciting maybe on the outside, but I know the principals in, in particular are very excited about this. There will be a two-day initial safety care training before school starts. So staff can get fully trained before school starts, so we can start the year up and running. And priority will go to people in our programs that need this training. So we want to have them ready to go. We also will have on August 27th, a one of, a one-day collaborative problem solving training for our program staff. All these hours would be paid, of course. And this is, this is coming out of the contract of really get better supporting E S Ps and program staff members so that they can really hit the ground running and, and be ready for the students who need the most support on day one. We have in, over the last three years, added a welcome to O'Malley and a welcome to Gloucester High School Day to our orientation for new staffs. We will continue with that. And really, the principals of each of those schools will be talking to the new staff and getting them oriented of what it's like to be in Gloucester High School or at O'Malley. And then the new staff orientation on August 28th is what we're doing. In addition, the high school, it was put out for teachers to do some curriculum work. We have less funding this year, but we also have fewer offerings. We are able to give some hours to all that asked. And these are some of the topics that will, teachers will be working on, either honing their craft or developing new curriculum. And there'll be summer hours to support their work. It's going to be a short summer, but it's going to be very busy. Very good. I have some people here with us who would need to join. This is a new group, the Joint Working Group, deepen student learning and improvement achievement. I've been told and I agree, I got to get better titles for groups. But I want to introduce who I have here with me from the committee. Women larger than this and we'll get into the size of that in a minute. But I have Rachel Rex here, I have Kim Shea and Melissa Francis and Abby Andrew, all members of the committee that will be speaking tonight. And they can, they can let them, let you know where they work, in case you don't know, their roles when they, when they get up to talk. Or you have to get up when you start to talk. But before I get started, I know.
Thanks, Amy. Thanks to the group. Work is going. I'm going to hear about just the initial stages of the group. I think that's the team gets off the ground. So just, you know, as, as this came out of negotiation with the GTA and GATE, really excited about the work this group's going to do. You know, the basis of it is that improving student learning achievement is the responsibility of all of us. And I shared, said just earlier, a shared, little shared responsibility among staff, school leaders, parents, GATE members, sort of thing. And always want to be open about our success and our challenges. And so to have a more collaborative approach, this working group is really focusing on data and doing a deep dive into our student learning achievement data across many indicators to share, share some of their initial steps and initial data they're looking at. But really point out where a few places, as they sort of, you know, go through their analysis, a few places that were doing quite well and that maybe had a few places to really zero in, you know, of all the places that were strong or a place we need to improve or a few places we need to zero in on. We need to report back to the community, the committee. And, and you know, hopefully really push us, help push us to zero in places that are, be really my priority. So appreciate shared responsibility. Also, as, as Amy talked about later, looking for more members as well. Excited for a start.
So the committee was, came out of, out of negotiations in, in November, out of the strike and the agreement. So it took a little bit to get that line off, off the ground. I typically like to have my committee date scheduled when we start the year. So scheduling and getting it set up took us a little bit. So we've only had two meetings, but they were very good meetings. I'm very happy with the people on the committee. You can see our committee members there. We have a wider range of classroom teachers. We have some coaches. We have some E S P on the teams. We have Title One teacher, high school, and then we have two committee, community members also on the committee. We would like to invite many more stakeholders to be part of this. In fact, there can be or should be a school committee member on the committee as well. So at some point you can make a decision of who that will be. And you can even see the dates will be meeting next year, starting on September 25th. But we had two meetings this year and I'm going to start talking partly and let my committee share some of what we've done so far. And I believe this is going to be Melissa and maybe Abby, if she wants to introduce. Yes. Okay, start with who you are and where you work.
Melissa Francis, K to five, literacy coach at Iggy's Veterans. So the first meeting was basically setting the agenda and talking about the collaboration, which you will know and see. And I always do that pause is always my choice because I have a hard time pausing meditation. So we talked about additional norms that we felt that we should add. And then we really started to dive into the data. We first looked at the M C A S and the DART analysis, which is, you saw me already. I wrote it down too and now I can't see. Recording tool. But basically just looking at all of the data through the M C A S and then comparing with using the heat map. And really just talking about our notices and our wonders and what did we see for trends? And what could be our next steps? Like what could this committee really dive into for data and decide what our focus would be and our goals? That was our agenda for the first day. Anything to add?
Could you just introduce yourself? Oh, I'm Abby Andrew. I teach third grade at East Veterans.
Okay, and our second meeting and the last one for this year, Kim, if you do some stuff and talk a little?
Yes, I'm Kim Shea. I'm a math teacher up here at Gloucester High School. I am a member of this data team and I've already signed up to do it next year. And we look at data a few ways. We have this macro data with STAR 360. Are you all familiar? That's our diagnostic tool. It is excellent, in my opinion. It's a diagnostic tool, but it's very informative. And in high school math, I also need actionable data to make a difference so that I can really put a dent in those numbers. The data that we discussed at our last meeting, I brought my high school growth numbers from the beginning of the year to the end of the year for Algebra II CP1. We use a program called Reveal, which has data collection. I can measure progress against standards. I can measure all their math the whole way through. Most importantly, what I can do with this is I can hone in on where the weakness is because it might not be where it was last year. And then the rest is up to the students and you would not believe how well they've done with it. Being able to zero in on it, what those students have achieved is an average growth of 77%. And right now I believe the district goal is 50 and we're moving towards a 60.
So the high growth is 60, yes.
So we're at 77% in this Algebra II class with this data collection behind it, actionable data. That then affects this informative data. Their average score by the end of it was about a centimeter away from STAR 360 declaring them exceeding expectations. So I really believe in this data collection. I really believe in this team. And I think if we work together to zero in, you know, there are strengths, there are weaknesses with every group. And we don't know what they are until the kids are sitting in front of us. We need real time data to be able to meet them where they are. And I really think this group is well positioned to do exactly that.
We have, I think, one more slide and then we.
Don't forget your question.
And then we'll forget. Okay. All right. Rachel's going to bring us on home and then with the question.
So as you know, I'm Rachel Rex and I'm representing the Gloucester Teachers Association because it was important to have union leadership on this committee as well as community members and a variety of stakeholders. And so Amy Pascarella, Mary Ann Aiello and I sort of spearheaded the planning for this committee and the two meetings that we've had. And then we sort of worked together on this presentation and other presentations, especially setting the dates for next year so that we're able to hit the ground running. And so naturally, student achievement and deepening and improving student learning is a goal that we all have. And like Ben mentioned, that we all share. So it's very near and dear to our hearts. So in our last meeting, we sort of set some goals for ourselves and we decided to take data that would make sense because we're dealing with pre-K, elementary, middle and high school. We want to make sure that we have data that sort of fits all of those different grade level, levels and learning styles. And so STAR 360 also present up at the high school and throughout middle and elementary school. We sort of picked, I think, did we say we picked third grade we were going to start looking at? So third, right on through the high school. So we're going to start looking at the STAR 360 data. And what we're going to do is we're going to let the data direct us. So we're going to look at this data and start to see what questions do we have based on these small data points that we're going to start with. And once we start asking questions, we think that that's really going to blow this committee wide open. And we're going to start looking at lots of other data to try to either answer questions or see where we can find improvement and how we can really hone in on improving student improvement, deepening that learning and getting those students up to those high growth percentages that we know our students can achieve. So we're really excited about this. And so as the slide mentions, we're going to look at STAR 360 and E L A to try to identify some trends, growth proficiency, subject areas and student groups. And we can do this also in math as well. So we're looking at grades three through 10 right now. And then we're going to see where the data takes us. So we're really excited to get some more folks to join the committee. I know Amy has a posting. It hasn't gone out yet. It's ready to go. Maybe it already went out.
It did go out.
It is, sorry. It has already gone out.
I'll give a reminder before Thursday.
And then we can, of course, hit the ground running. Like we said in an earlier slide, we've got meetings scheduled throughout the school year next year. And we can always, I mean, modify as we need to. And we can also, in some of the months where we don't have a meeting on the books, we can also work in our smaller groups to, you know, go in whichever direction the media is telling us. But we're really excited to dive deep into this.
I will also, I like, I always, I try to get the committee set in the spring, remind people, my new people.
I think now if there are time for questions.
Okay, so, so we get a lot of data, presentations here, right? And it's always, in some ways, the best part of being on the school committee because we get from the coaches especially. And we learn what's really going on in schools. I guess I have one question, two questions, two big questions. One, how is some data actionable and some is not? Okay, like, because we've been getting STAR 360 and M C A S and student growth potential improvement and, and that's not actionable?
It's, it's informative. STAR 360 tells us where they are. And then down at the classroom level is where we get the actionable data so that we can affect that. We don't teach out of STAR 360. We, it's a diagnostics. So it tells us where. So it tells us where they are, but then when I want to move them, I don't move them with STAR 360.
Right, but you were talking about another dataset that you get from a particular.
Program, yes.
So I don't think we've, I don't remember a presentation on that one, but we have all this data that we, that I know that every building is compiling all the time. And so, um, so that, I mean, I guess I'm wondering, that data very often is very disappointing, always trying to get better, but it's not where we want it to be, to be honest. Um, and I know, at least, I mean, I have elementary and middle school kids. I know that those classrooms are, they are looking at a classroom level, they have been for years. Um, so tell me what's different about what this committee is going to do with that data that's different from what the coaches and everyone else has been sitting and doing for years?
So we just, so think about it this.
I have the same exact, but I'm hearing enthusiasm and I love it.
Everyone's smiling.
So I think, um, is, uh, look at this, first of all, the work that you've heard so much about. Okay, continue to hear more and more about it, you know, but, uh, heard from the elementary schools for a number of reasons. Now hear about it more from the middle school. You can see your starting draft from the high school as well, with Sean Goulart and Michael Tels here with James Cook. So that's what we continue, and we'll get better and better at that. Okay, that's the work of teachers, working with each other and working with coaches, understanding how the students are doing and make change to those tools, okay? This group is looking at sort of a step up on that. Log juggling trends, groups, that sort of stuff, to point out to us where, on a spot, like a, a, a condition by level, where we need to pay more attention to them. Okay, so we need to do both things. We need to see what patterns are, okay? And we need this group's leadership to point this out to us and point us, okay? We also need the on the ground level, you know, month to month, you know, periodically, post book. We also need then, um, what, um, in addition to that, you know, and I think when Mike and Sean were here from high school, you know, that collaboration among teachers around the ongoing, how are they doing on this assessment? Or how are they doing on what we're teaching? Or are we learning what, are they learning what we're teaching for stuff? So there's many levels here. This is, I'd say, more broad-based level, designed to understand trends, understand over time, it was the range, this stuff. Also a buzz bomb.
So I just want to push back one little bit and I definitely hear what you're saying, but, um, for instance, we notice every year from fifth grade to sixth grade, scores go down. Right, the kids are doing fine in fifth grade and then they get to middle school and they're, they plummet. Question I ask every single year, I mean, ask this year because it's unlike, I ask. Um, so we see that trend, we've been seeing that. Is this group going to say, okay, we see that trend, we're going to, we're going to dive deep, we're going to dive into classrooms, we're going to dive into like how, how many more about how we're going to look at these trends that everyone has been seeing for a long time?
I know what the areas to answer your first question, to back quickly. Um, the data that we were talking about, the benchmarks, is really like taking your temperature, right? And then we have to dive deep, so we have to have that information. But then the actionable one is actually informs the instruction day to day. So that's kind of the two types of data that we're using. But then to fast forward to your question now is, yes, we have been seeing trends. And yes, we're hoping that having the different perspectives from grades three, because we just talked about this a couple of weeks ago, was grade three was a dipping point for us, right? So what we want to explore that more, is it the star? Is it the way they're taking the star? Is it the way that we're assessing our curriculum changes? Is the standard, the stamina, like, there's so many, is it attendance? I mean, there are so many questions that can be asked. So that's why it's so challenging and it doesn't happen fast, right? But because we have a variety of people sitting around the table, we're hoping that we can start to but fine tune, okay, let's focus on grade three, like you mentioned, grade six and maybe grade 10. And then really see what's happening at each of the levels and see if we have similar trends or if they're very different. And then I would imagine we may have to branch out into smaller groups. But we're in the very beginning phases of looking at it in this way. And like I told Ben on the way out of the last meeting, I'm not very patient, it's going to be really hard for me. Um, I'm going to be honest about that. Um, because you're right, we are constantly looking at data and we're constantly analyzing data. But the children change, the, you know, the attendance, the, like, like we already have talked about, so many things are changing. So you can't just pinpoint one thing, you constantly have to evaluate, analyze and adjust our practice. We talk about it in every single committee meeting, every three times a year at least, and then in our many, many daily meetings. So it's challenging and that's why I think having all the perspectives is great.
And this is not replaced with the meeting.
We will continue, we will continue to dive.
Make sure.
Continue to dive deep on the student level, on the standard level. This is more of a global across the district. What trends are receiving? What messaging can we say as a joint group that we all say, this is important? Whatever, whatever the data ends up showing us, if it's the third grade, if it's something in 10th grade or whatever it might, sixth grade, whatever it might be. We didn't find that out yet because we've only met twice, but what, whatever we land on as the, the working group, that messaging is going to come from us to say, this is what Gloucester Public Schools is focusing on because we see this as a need. And we are going to get special development in that area. We're going to give collaboration time and common planning time and support to, to work on whatever that is. It's to set the tone. Right? But we really want the data to show us the way, if that makes sense, right? So we're going to use that data. So if six, if there isn't that fifth to sixth grade dip this year, right? That might not be an area that we explore. However, as you've mentioned, it's maybe a regular one, so that might be something. But none of us are going in, well, I don't want to speak for all of us, but I'm not going into this with a predisposed idea of exactly what's going to happen. So I'm eager to start looking at the data and let that sort of direct us. The other thing that I think is really important is that it's really difficult to lump third grade through 10th grade in a committee. So it's, I think, as Melissa had mentioned, it's going to be important that at some point we'll break into smaller groups. The other thing is there's a wealth of data at our fingertips. And if we throw all that data up on an agenda somewhere, it's going to really, it's going to be very off putting. And I think people are going to become overwhelmed by that and probably may, may not be interested in this committee. So we're trying to sort of start with a, a narrow little perspective, STAR 360, and then expand it as the data tells us to and as it makes sense. And I think what's really great about this committee is that administration and educators are in this together, shoulder to shoulder, side by each. And so it's a great collaboration and I think it's important as our relationships heal and we move forward.
Yeah, I just want to, I'm not, I promise I'm done. I'm doing your role now. So, great, and Wendy, I haven't met you before, but I'm really, um, because we've been hearing so much data, to hear your data from your class is really significant. And, um, I pay a lot of attention to the data. And so it's good to know, so that's something that's working, right? So there's an example of like an actionable, um, approach that worked. And so then there's also things to learn there. So I appreciate your sharing that because that's, you know, obviously the goal, right, is to improve student learning.
Well, your question's answered, Melissa, do you have more?
I don't have questions, but I'm loving the enthusiasm, so I'm good. If you're working together and putting the smiles on your face and we're talking about data and student achievement, um, I'm not going to ask any questions right now, I'm just going to sit and be patient, because Melissa can't be patient. I get it. And see what's to come, I'm excited, but I'm not going to ask any questions.
Yeah, and I think, uh, Rachel brought up a, a good point, which was, you know, you, you get lost in the minutia of the data and you just, your eyes glaze over, you know, like, oh my gosh, I can't take it. I think coming out of, uh, strike, I think one of the things that I saw this as was an opportunity for us to work together and say, you know, maybe we can kind of begin a process where there's a little bit more collaboration. This is a path to that, one path of maybe many. And I don't want to, you know, I, I, I can tell by just listening to that, that is not lost on any of people sitting on over there as well, so. Um, I think that's really, for me, is it also needs to grow organically, like, we'll figure out what the role of the committee is and, and what, how they're best utilized. But I also think that most important, overshadowing all of that, is the ability for us to sit at a table and work on problems together.
I think that's what is most exciting about this group for me and why I joined is because oftentimes we just talk about tier one instruction, we talk about the general ed classroom and we talk about, but there are so many pieces to the puzzle that impacts student learning. So we need the community outreach, we need parents to be involved, we need them practicing, we need them working with us, we need our special education teachers to be truly specialized, so the continued professional development. We need our general ed teachers to have the resources that they need and that's why we totally revamped our curriculum. So we're constantly making those steps forward. We need our multilingual learners being up to date and current and learning what is actually working for our students and we need to help them with that, so. And I'm not saying they're not doing that, I want to be clear on that, I'm recording that I think everybody is working really hard and doing the best they can. But we can always improve, right? So, and me included, so we want to constantly be looking for ways to work together. And I think that having a joint committee with all people involved and community, community members sharing what they believe is important too, will help us to figure out where to look at data.
Totally agree, and I think that it's, it would be, it would be not very, it would not, it would not be advantageous to say there's probably going to be some stumbling blocks, there's going to be times where we're going to go up against it and then struggle a little bit. Just the fact that I think that there's a committee, we're working on student improvement, we're working on the things that we can together, I think it is definitely.
And I know by forming this committee, I know one of the things we find a lot about. Say, we, we do a lot of presentations on student growth and the data, I mean, you know, unfortunately, every time we come to present because we have a lot of questions and a lot of enthusiasm around kind of the promise of all that information. Um, and I think what's important with this, this undertaking, why it is important, for it to be important, is having a sense of urgency around some of the information that we're seeing, right? For kids who, you know, have third grade ones, so how do we like learn what's going on in third grade that's so good? And what are we going to work on, help students, you know, learn better? Um, and so I think having a broader group, having these conversations instead of, um, you know, some people, obviously, you say data, people may glaze over, um, but having access to information that is digestible for some people, right? Clearly, you know, there are people that are all over it and it's so second nature that that's just, it's just another piece of their toolkit is the data that they see and it mixes with everything and all their other strengths and everything else that they look to. Um, so I think that's going to be an important outcome as well is that people who may shy away from, you know, the people shy away from technology, the people shy away maybe from the information, but if one of the things that comes out is how do we make it more digestible, how do we make it more accessible? How do we help each other understand what we're seeing? I don't know, and, and definitely across, uh, the grades, I think it's just going to be really powerful to see how kids are progressing. Um, and I know you wanted to say something to Laura's question as well.
Um, it kind of actually goes with what you just said too now. Um, but I was just thinking about how talking about actual items and how can we use this awesome program? Um, well, I'm, me, me being in third grade, I don't have access to that program. But the STAR program that we do use has so many actionable, um, like parts to it. I just feel like they're hidden and like I only discover them by exploring. And so I feel like if those actual parts are, we'll show them to other teachers, or maybe that, if we talk about how we can use STAR because that's what we have as a more, um, college school.
And STAR is slightly differently at the grade levels, STAR's been at elementary a lot longer. Um, and they promise monitor in between the beginning, middle and end year data. At the high school, it's more of the beginning, middle and end because they have other data that they rely on. And I, I wouldn't necessarily say that they have to do it the elementary way, but we have the same common assessment for the measure achievement, I think that's what's great.
And what's available in STAR is available across the board, is that correct?
Right, but it might be used better differently if elementary versus high school and even middle. Um, the other thing I want to say is when this committee came out of the negotiations, I asked around to my colleagues at other districts, like, how do you run a, a committee like this? And nobody's ever heard of a committee like this where it is such a diverse group and so many stakeholders that we're all working together and hopefully rowing, rowing in the same direction and like sending the same message.
On student learning achievements.
Specifically on student learning achievement. Um, I have a lot of colleagues that are like, tell me how it goes. And I'm kind of excited and intrigued and so, so are we. Because I think, um, you know, if we are, you know, all the same messaging and all moving in the same direction, we can make a difference. So that's, that's our hope and dream and so working.
So when they're asking you, tell me how it goes, they're probably sitting back, kind of like.
They're like, oh, that sounds like.
But we'll see, it's going to be great. Come join us if you want to join the committee, we need more members.
I want to make a comment, which you can only remember. When we worked on attendance, one of the things that was so impactful was the data that we got about attendance and they, this group we worked with had made it digestible. And then, so anyway, it was a really good model, I'm not saying you should do what they did, you have a lot more knowledge. But it was a one way, it's one example I've seen of like complex data with lots of different impacts and different, you know, really lots of reasons kids are absent, et cetera, et cetera. And they, they were able to take the data and make it digestible. Not saying that's what you're going to do, you have a thousand other things to do, but it was one way of taking a very complicated national issue and making it digestible for, so it's just, it was just a very interesting model for what it's.
And I just want to thank each and every one of you for being on this group and committing to it and your time and, and that curiosity and that wanting to dive into the data and make a difference. It's really good to see, talk about at this level, much appreciation that.
And I will be helping to set timelines so that we don't splur for forever, so.
My knowledge, I just want to not fall who I've been telling Melissa to be patient.
It's one shot, by one grade, I'm glad, yeah, so we can't wait. To figure it out, that's all I'm saying. Okay, I keep looking, but it wasn't, so now. Do you have a question?
Yeah, not a question, just, just appreciation, honestly. Uh, you know, like, this is like, I think, you know, I was, I've been looking forward to this presentation for a long time, ever since this was announced. And, um, you know, I, I think this is a real bright spot that came out of November. And I really appreciate the enthusiasm and the optimism and, and I share that with you. So that's all I wanted to say.
I want to thank the team for our leadership, um, I heard you were a team, okay? Because normally, despite all, you normally want to grow up to a committee, okay? I mean, it's, these are kind of boring by nature, okay? So I just, I just urge, I just urge. Hear me out, I urge to call, that we call you a team or a working group or something. Because committees is boring and you guys are not boring, okay? Doing really important work and great collaboration, great leadership and it's very, deeply appreciated.
Thank you. I don't want on the agenda is to change the name and let Ben know if it's a working group, work committee.
It's not committee.
Yeah, it'd be better term out there.
I don't, first item on the agenda is to rename.
Someone will ask me what meeting I'm going to, I'm like, I don't know, those meetings, too long.
I'm, I'm going to say, I'm going to say, I'm going to say something, how about think tank or something, I don't know, think tank? Brain trust, I don't know.
Brain trust, okay.
Thank you both.
Thank you very much. Carrie, you're on your own. You're all right without me.
Thanks, we're going to move on, on the budget, right? As you know, this is six one process comes to budget development process comes in tonight. We install the work that happens after that. We just pull up, um, short presentations. Just a quick summary of the public budget, this is not changed since you last reviewed it, and the last one to city council.
Someone's echoing.
Phone's echoing, there you are. Yeah, I was, but I, okay, alright. So, just going to give you a quick summary of the budget, a few weeks since you reviewed it, nothing has changed. Any consequence, maybe like one small change, I don't, case, get to it. So these are the summary of the change proposed in the operating budget. There's a bunch, the special education decreases in the budgets, not our costs, but the budget, the operating budget goes down by two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The total costs are increasing by two hundred and two thousand dollars, okay? But some of that's covered by either prepaid tuition or the short break revolving funds, okay? Our contractual obligation to our salary increase is just over one point five million dollars. Our employee benefit increases, which includes health and retirement insurance, here's six seven thousand dollars increases from last year. Transplantation lease payments are an increase of three hundred seventy, three hundred seventy three thousand dollars. We're going to take those off of grants and onto our operating budget. Same in the next one, critical materials, chromebook, cell supplies, taking them off of grants and onto our operating budget. It's going to be four hundred forty thousand dollars. And then, new positions, we're really focused on special education program services, to two hundred, two hundred forty thousand dollars have been increased in those new positions. That totals an increase in the budget of two point seven million dollars, two point seven four million dollars. That's just recapping, here is what you have printed out, I just shared, shared with you this summary, which is the same summary that went in front of the, that you approved the public hearing, and you approved to go to the mayor and city council, back again to you, because city council's approved it. You see pluses and minuses there, the percentage basis on the right hand side, and also the difference, difference column. We've gone over how the few that looked larger than normal, like professional development, and also IP, and transportation are direct results of these changes, which I just described, but typically dollars coming off of grants going on to operating budget. A lot of change in practices for the most part, or change in what we're using or purchasing, just a change in which budget pays for any grants to operate. And then the other change here is the last one, just office, eight point six nine, eight point seven percent, that's taking a salary that's getting existing, our attendance officer and moving her, her salary from, I think, Gloucester High School to the district, because she's a district personnel, she serves all schools. Grant, McCrant, thank you, McCrant. Also, another example of a grant expense in which I'm not done. This is just, we have a couple of different changes on this, the only number of changes here, this is the added district transportation costs. The change was in the, was there a change here?
No change.
Two changes, sorry, no change. This is simply showing you that in a one point five million dollar out of district special education transportation budget, or sorry, costs, that seven hundred forty thousand dollars of those are paid by the general operating fund. Because the rest, eight hundred and ten thousand dollars is paid by certain rate for all of that. That's how, that's how we have, there's two different things that you've been considering for six months now, which is the cost of things like added transportation or added tuition, but then what's actually paid for by the operating budget. Then this is just a quick summary here of our, you know, I guess you've seen this as well. Over the years, typically you have about a three percent increase until the last few years. And that's been caused by, as we described again and again, really significant increases in costs in a variety of areas. Special education costs, transportation costs, technology costs, employment costs, healthcare costs are all increasing faster than the city's budget. This is the, sorry, this is the one change, okay? It's not a change of costs, okay, or the budget, it's simply a change of where we are making, sorry, when we'll be making new private placements, or new, sorry, new placements for special education students from moving out of district. We thought we'd be making some of those this, this current school year, but because we weren't able to, though we anticipate that, that, sorry, we've gone. So instead of us anticipating those would be tuition costs that already will be happening, okay, so seven million dollars. And we wouldn't have anticipated growth, because we are, aren't building that growth into the budget, okay, as we planned. Those placements didn't happen, we thought they were going to, they didn't happen, and that's why the anticipated total tuition budget is lower. But you see the anticipated cost to your goal to zero, seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It also allows us, because we haven't had those placements yet, but still expect to get them next year, to have a little higher on, on our special education tuition contingency. Total dollars haven't changed at all, just where they are has changed a little bit, simply because we didn't get the place to expect it to during the end school. Does that make sense?
We need to be placed with something.
Yeah, it's at least three, yeah, three and, at least three. We were three throughout school year, but now some additions to that. I think it might be five.
When do you hear that those, I mean, when do you hear that those have happened, like when?
Yeah, so, so it's per year, now, uh, much more of a week. In the past, it used to be you had to make a place, they get close to it. As soon, as soon as you figured out, working with the families, the place that fit, you know, that child moves, okay? Uh, this, these days can be months if not more. And that's, that's a reason that, yeah, that's sort of the. Really, since COVID. That's all we have on the budget, so this is, this is what you're voting on as you know.
I'm learning that we approved the fiscal year two thousand twenty six budget in the amount of fifty four million, two hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty eight, eight ninety seven. Second, we need a report.
So I just wanted to say this, this was discussed at Nina on last Wednesday, and there was a motion that came out of our committee to recommend a committee to adopt this number that we've been discussing.
Christopher Keane.
Yes.
Chris Prince, yes. Chris Lansing, yes. Mr. Melman.
Yes.
Mr. Mene.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, there we go. Onto this, this year.
Alright.
I'm sure Gary's.
We begin again.
You can take a breath, you can.
Thank you.
I'm going to move it to November, not October.
What's that?
Let's move it to November.
No, we totally started November, I mean, we start in November internally, you guys start in January, right? In, in, in a city, it's an longer process than it is in town. You can go get it done, just because of the timing.
We need to get elected. Okay, next thing in the business is the superintendent's evaluation for this current fiscal year, it feels like we just did this because we did more recently. But that was for the last full year, so now we are doing this for the year. And I will try to be thorough, but, but highlights. And I just first want to say, I want to thank everybody on this committee for their thoughtful comments and the work on these evaluations. It, it just is really impressive that, just the attention to what's happening in our district and the leadership that that provides. There are a lot of really wonderful comments, really insightful, forward rationale and everything. So I'm delighted that this process has, has gone really well. Okay, so I am going. I shared it, I shared it, it's not the last week. Okay, so, so, okay, so I'm going to begin with probably the most awkward professional setting that anybody possibly dream up, and it's the only situation that, you know, endured by superintendents and no one else anywhere else, probably at any job. But, here we go. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is to assess the progress towards goals. And the goals were in our packet a couple of meetings ago, and we had that ratings for those. And I'm going to read the supporting questions first. The student learning goal, or the professional practice goal, the rating scale is did not meet some progress, significant progress, met and exceeded. And as a committee, two, two members rated significant progress, one member rated met, and four members rated exceeded for that goal. This is your three of our going improvement, which is reflected in college's goals. And it's, you know, nice to see positive ratings on this. Student learning goals, four rated some progress, one significant progress, two exceeded. And district improvement goals, one rated some progress, three rated significant progress, one rated met, two rated exceeded. And we have the. Right, I think I want to read the comments first in terms of the overall and the cycle summative evaluation. As opposed, as opposed to details. So in summary, I read through all the evaluations and I put summary for, for the kind of collective feedback and ratings. And then I put excerpts from these school committee members, so if there are things that you want to add into the record, you can refer to it. Sessions, okay? If I didn't capture, I did try to capture a lot of the comments, so that everybody's feedback was, was incorporated. In summary, the school committee has provided a stellar review of Ben Lummis's leadership of Gloucester Public Schools, evidenced by four exemplary ratings and three proficient. And we all know Jesse was described proficient as being extremely high bar, which means that, you know, they already have the high bar, and four members rated exemplary, which is very well deserved. There's a unanimous confidence that investments in curriculum, implementation of district-wide data and form practices, examination of special education programs, mentorship sports, professional development, I'm not sure there are any specific initiatives that I have not listed, that I are definitely important work of the district. Everybody believes it will result in improved academic outcomes for all students, a goal we all share. And I think that confidence in the work that has happened over the past year, it really, you know, we have so many things in place that we should definitely start seeing the fruits of a lot of hard work by a lot of people under Ben's leadership. Highlighted strengths include genuine commitment to every student's experience and academic outcomes, including post-graduation plans. The completion of the three-year plan for ongoing improvement, which included thoughtful initiatives in all aspects of the delivery of instruction and services to improve student learning, remarkable communication skills and family engagement, including multilingual communications, have deep and student belonging and family connection to our schools, and excellent financial and operational management. I think this whole district is a pretty complex organization. And, you know, between law, HR, finances, which is no small feat, and so many other things, you know, having staff and all that, excellent financial and operational management. Excerpts from school committee members. Improving academic outcomes is still a challenge for the district, but I'm confident that Superintendent Lummis has the talent to guide his team to a future where we achieve, we are striving to accomplish today. Despite a significant challenge posed by the interruption of learning this school year, Ben demonstrated unwavering instructional leadership. He maintained a clear focus on students and learning, ensuring that district's priorities remain aligned with educational goals. His ability to lead with calm clarity and collaboration helps stabilize the district with a demonstration of maintaining trust with family, students, and staff. And that comment was made by Keith. Jeremy said, Mr. Lummis has exceeded my expectations in his facilitation of instruction throughout pre-K, twelve, and his leadership proponents as overseen by his administration. From me, I said Superintendent Lummis is a leader who genuinely cares about every student, a quality that has been evident since the day he joined our district. His deep commitment to Gloucester Public Schools continues to shine through his actions and leadership. When considering his overall performance marked by deep knowledge in all aspects of leading a school district, I remain confident that we are unfortunate to have such an outstanding leader at the helm. Superintendent Lummis exemplifies what it means to be a great school superintendent. Phil Melman. Contributed to the wrong line.
Like, as he said, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. And I don't think I ever quoted here from Keith. No, I don't. Phil Melman says, the district has seen improvement in testing and proficiency over the past year. Metrics and the ability to measure student growth have been improved under Superintendent Lummis's guidance. The superintendent has a clear vision of where he would like to see the district. And from Laura, Superintendent Lummis continues to work with administration to build Gloucester Public Schools instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. I believe he has clearly shown that our district must continue to improve on all levels in order to provide the type of education and our community, our education, our community, and students deserve. And he has continued the process of implementing systems on all of the above that will in time lead to the improvement we all seek. This is also you. Ben leads with, so from Melissa, Ben leads with a clear and consistent message that every day matters and all kids matter. His belief is reflected in his daily actions, decision-making, and unwavering commitment to equity and student success. His commitment to be increasingly present in our, in our schools and classrooms and be available to staff to discuss their concerns and priorities is very welcome. This visible and approachable leadership style is essential to relationship building and reinforces a strong connection to day-to-day teaching and learning. I give Ben an exemplary rating overall, largely reflective of the strong effort and initiative demonstrated in moving these goals and priorities forward. This rating acknowledges foundational work underway with a clear expectation that continued implementation will be measurable growth in student achievement. It is very encouraging to note Ben's qualities, kids are reading more, writing more, and learning. So the overall ratings on instructional leadership, three rated proficient and four rated exemplary. Management and operations, two rated proficient and five rated exemplary. Family and community engagement, two rated proficient, five rated exemplary. Professional culture, three rated proficient and four rated exemplary. And now Bill is going to go through the.
Superintendent's performance goals.
You can do that, and then the next one, sure.
There's three, I'm sorry, there's four superintendent performance goals. First is student learning goal, three school committee members noted that there was some progress, it's going to be some progress. Two is significant progress, and two has exceeded that goal. Second one is continued to focus, the focused ongoing purposeful action steps identified in the district's plan for ongoing improvement. We had three that met the goal, and four noted had exceeded the goal. The third superintendent's performance goal is continue to provide responsible leadership and team support. We had one noted as significant. We had one noted as significant progress, four, uh, met that goal and two exceeded that goal. And then the fourth one strengthened operations and financial, finance systems. We had one that, uh, noted significant progress, four met that goal, and two again exceeded that goal. And we'll go to, do you want to read the comments? Or do superintendent's performance rating?
The, uh, oh, sorry, official.
Yeah. Uh, superintendent's performance rating for standard one instructional leadership with regard to curriculum. Four people noted proficient and three exceeded instruction. We had one noted in, uh, needs improvement, three proficient and three exceeded assessment. We had two that needed improvement, one proficient and four has exceeded valuation. We had one is need improvement, five is proficient, and one has exceeded data-informed decision-making. Three school committee members noted proficiency there and four has, uh, exceeded. And then student learning. We had the same, three noted proficiency and four exceeded the expectation. Comments from some of the school committee members. Melissa to Sheriff Prince noted, despite the significant challenge posed by the interruption in learning this school year, Ben demonstrated unwavering instructional leadership. He maintained a clear focus on students and learning, ensuring the district's priorities remained aligned with educational goals. His ability to lead with calm clarity and collaboration helped stabilize the district with a demonstration of maintaining trust with families, students, and staff. Very, Keen noted, fortunately, Mr. Lummis has gone above and beyond a proficient rating because of his careful attention to data, trends, concerns, destruction, and his attention to detail that positively affects teachers, parents, staff, and the community at large. Observing his leadership has inspired many to take strong, yet delicate charge as he has and to continue pushing for excellence.
Uh, management operations, um, for environment, um, develops and executes effective plans, procedures, routines, um, uh, and so on. Five rated proficient, two rated exemplary. Human resource management and development, two rated proficient, five rated exemplary. Uh, scheduling and management information systems, six rated proficient, one rated exemplary. Laws, ethics, and policies, uh, three rated proficient and four rated exemplary. Fiscal systems, one rated proficient, six rated exemplary. Overall, uh, three rated proficient and four rated exemplary. Uh, comments, um, from me, I said Superintendent Lummis is an ethical leader, excellent at all financial and operational facets of running Boston Public Schools. The budget development process, which was already strong, has improved even further this year with an even more articulated budget, budget presentation that ties funding and investments to district goals. And a challenging staffing environment, Boston Public Schools are participating in school job fairs to recruit for Boston Public Schools is a great place to work. Uh, from Keith, the superintendent excels in fiscal systems, aligning budgets with planned priorities, example, CBT, special education, and establishing the special education reserve fund, demonstrating proactive leadership. Developments in human resources is commendable with the recent development of robust training programs supporting staff capacity. The overall excellent rating, Mr. Lummis reflects Mr. Lummis's strong operational management um, and reflects my belief that Ben has taken steps above and beyond in order to recruit staff and enhance training for current staff, especially in education, for parent professionals. Uh, and Melissa says, knowing our country is in a crisis to retain and recruit talented teachers, Ben focuses on the priority to promote ongoing professional development that targets the needs of all of our students. His leadership reflects a strong ethical foundation with strict adherence to laws, policies, and transparent government. Ben empowers his administrators and support staff to use every dollar to meet safety, health, and emotional and social needs of our students. He demonstrates prudent oversight and maintains a balanced budget, align, aligning expenditures with the long-term goals of student achievement. While I gave an exemplary rating for environment, I recognize there are funding issues that create barriers, barriers to having certain capital projects completed. The rating is for the effort.
Superintendent's performance rating, uh, rating for standard three, family and community engagement. Superintendent Lummis received a overall grade of two proficient and five exceeding. So, two and five breaks down into four categories, first being engagement, two proficient, five exceeding, sharing responsibility, one proficient, six engaging, uh, I'm sorry, uh, exceeding. Three, uh, C, communication, two, uh, proficient and five exceeding. And D, family concerns, four proficient and three exceeding. Again, an overall rating of two proficient and five exceeding. Some of the comments were from Jeremy McKean, from welcoming local forces to our open meetings to hosting large gatherings where real community work took place. Mr. Lummis has been a familiar face to many in our community. There hasn't been an educational event without him present. And his investment in the city and in students and school staff have been duly noted and appreciated. That was from Jeremy McKean. And I noted, I've, I've had the opportunity to work with people who I consider excellent communicators. Superintendent Lummis would be at the top of that list. His ability to deliver messages clear and concisely while being cognizant of his audience is unmatched. And the last one, we have superintendent's performance rating for professional culture. It is broken down into five categories, commitment to high standards, one needs improvement, one proficient, and five exceeding. Cultural proficiency, four proficient, three exceeding. Communications, two proficient, five exceeding. Continuous learning, one needs improvement, two proficient, and four exceeding. Shared vision, three proficient, and four exceeding. And the fifth one, managing conflict, three proficient, four exceeding, for an all, overall rating of three proficient and four exceeding. Some of the comments included, uh, Melissa to Sheriff Prince wrote, Ben exemplifies a strong professional culture by modeling integrity, empowering staff, and developing and promoting a collaborative environment. Often with resistance, he leads on clarity and purpose, building trust and buy-in across the school community. He empowers his administrators to lead with respect and foster collaboration and problem solving. He encourages best practices for our district aligned initiatives with a continuous commitment to adapt instructional practices based on a debt, on data analysis. I am beyond impressed with Ben's efforts to be more present in the schools and accessible to staff. Under his leadership, effective teams have been developed to address student challenges resulting in processes and structures to address concerns. Ben promotes a clear and shared vision that guides the district's work with unity and purpose. And Keith Minio noted that Mr. Lummis consistently exemplifies proficient leadership, cultivating a vibrant, planned, aligned culture characterized by a steadfast commitment to high standards, cultural proficiency, effective communication, a dedication to continuous learning, a shared vision among staff, and adept conflict resolution. Laura Weesent noted, Ben Lummis has continued to focus on improving, improving student learning and on building bridges with staff to heal the fractured district, district culture. Ben has kept our students and their needs front and center throughout this year while making significant moves to rebuild our professional culture. I commend him for both. That was from Laura Weesent. And I wrote, not only am I impressed with Superintendent Lummis as a leader, but I am also impressed with the type of person he is. He cares deeply about public education, our students, our schools, our family, and the people he works with. I'm always impressed with his bandwidth and ability to come up with solid solutions. This was a difficult year and I'm thankful that we had such an individual superintendent on this, leading our district. We're fortunate to have him at the top.
I've got another comment from Keith under the summary. Uh, my overall proficient rating reflects the balance Ben maintains between his cultural and operational strengths while minding the ongoing imperative to address academic progress and attendance challenges. These traits instill in me, instill me with confidence in superintendent's capacity to lead the district toward continuing to build that in the coming year. So, I am thrilled to be able to deliver a very, very positive and well-deserved, beyond well-deserved, it's been a really hard year. And, um, and despite it all, we celebrate successes and we celebrate students individually and all ages and all, you know, all abilities and interests, um. And there's just a vibrancy and specialness about Boston. Definitely bring that specialness as well.
Thank you all, so. As you said, probably only superintendents in school systems and not local systems, it's a public evaluation of their work. And, um, and so thank you for everything. Thank you for the support and for the comments. Thank you for your honesty. Thank you for being so articulate. I'm humbled, as I always am. Uh, you know, and I appreciate it so much because, you know, I in addition to all of that, I I am a couple of things. One, first and foremost, I, I don't comment anything on my own. You know, it's not the nature of the job. It's not the nature of my style. I rely on so many good people doing such hard work throughout our school system. That's, you know, it's everybody. I don't comment anything by myself. So, appreciate the comments so much. I appreciate you folks for seeing me, who I try to be, well, in the best days. And why I love being on the worst days. But first and foremost, I don't want to comment anything on my own. Very, very aware of that. Also, first and foremost, um, as you said, we do need to continue our work on, I always say these together. I always say together, deepening student learning, improving student achievement. Because those are different things. Um, and they're both very important things. So, in addition to having very, very powerful and I think in, in, um, positive evaluation, we all know there's work to be done. That's okay. It's all right here. That's not saying, that's just, you know, so, and at the same time, we know that every single day because of our teachers, because of our staff, our school leaders, our kids have tremendous days in our schools. They do awesome things with each other and the other school leaders. And we should never stop pushing better. I won't, and there are also ways I can, or do your work to be better. Then, um, so, so thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'm, um, I'm honored, as I always say, I say this every year, it's really true. I'm honored to work in Boston. It's a remarkable community. Lucky to be a part of now in many ways, as you know, living here as well. For a few, for a few years now, anyway. But, uh, it's, it's been a blessing to be here and we want to be working this hard. It's been a great people I've run. To you, uh, all together.
Thank you. I'll take this to read. What, make a motion for this. Sorry.
I move to accept the superintendent's violation report as presented.
It's all, uh, all of them, prison law.
Sure.
Moving to second thing, um, we have to roll call.
Mr. McKee.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Ms. Quincy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minial.
Yes.
Yes.
So they can go over their website and, you know, and mine as well.
Yeah, I think you said, I think you're you mentioned it in the comments, but I think your reflection is really informative.
Yes.
And a really great, uh, if somebody says, oh, what happened last year?
Yeah.
Or it is like an amazing document that talks about all the work that has gone on. So you're putting individual about you? I'm asking, I don't, I'm not recognizing, I'm just.
I think it's just.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, next item in business is subcommittee report, building and finance, secretary of the bank, June eighteen. Um, I am going to agree. We do have some action items. So we met on last Wednesday, or June eighteen, um, Kathy, Bill, and I, with Gary, Superintendent Lummis, and we had Brian Mafatikum, our athletic director. Um, Brian reported out on athletic fees and, um, made a recommendation that we increase the fees. Um, when we heard that, we had a lot of questions and, um, got some good input. So Brian has, um, indicated that our fees have not been raised probably in the past ten years. And as you know, our fee schedule, um, reflects fees based on student um, ability to get free lunch and a loose lunch, as well as the fee that we set. In other words, we have a fee, but then there's three other fields that are on the side with that one thing. Um, anyway, so ten years without a increase, I can give examples specifically with like referees, how seven years ago it was eighty-four dollars for a referee and now it's a hundred and four dollars for a referee. So, um, he gave other examples as well as to, um, meaning of increase in the revolving account. Um, so he is recommending ten percent for high school sports and fifty percent for O'Malley's sports. Now, I know we hear fifty percent and we think, oh, could it really translate to like twenty dollars? And if we increase these fees as he recommended, it will give a fourteen thousand dollar additional revenue, um, to the, to be able to address the costs, uh, in the athletic budget. Uh, he did mention that, um, there are there is money owed from past years. As you know, students and families are struggling and there is this unwritten policy that no student will be charged away. Um, so our district should be very, um, proud of the fact that regardless of the fact that we're setting fees and increasing fees, our students get to play when they want to play. And we're also very grateful to the Boston Red Foundation because they help contribute when students get, no, GFA, the GFA, sorry. Um, when they, um, when they get paid. So, um, we're such a wonderful community.
Would you okay just for me to show because you hear the percentages?
Yeah, yeah, if I was going to read them off, but definitely if you could show it, that's great. I just want to tag on to what Melissa said about, um, about what Brian had said about participation. Said that there are wonderful people in our district, in our schools, host students who encourage their participation. Uh, not just kind of like general, everybody should play sports. It's not that. They know the students to kind of, you know, steer them and encourage them to, to do certain activities, which, um, you know, I think at middle school, it's probably, you know, a lot of kids are busy, uh, with other sports or whatever, but I, I think that's a nice way, um, track program at the middle school is amazing. There's a lot of really accessible ways to, to get kids involved in, um, team sports, which have countless benefits. Um, you know, it's same with the, the high school, remember, for students to be. countless benefits. Uh, you know, same with the high school, everybody looking out for students to be connected.
So just what we put on the screen for everyone to see. As you'll see, um, you know, the actual increased dollar, a dollar increase is as much as $20 or a $15 sort of thing. So those increases aren't very large. The other thing that's important is, um, and Brian's all, you know, if you look at Brian's, you look at other communities, just much more time, you know. See, I'm as a very new situation people. But typically, they're a lot higher in this, um, this report, you have to make certain. The road for a piece that all saw down to still that anybody wants like.
So there was a motion by Kathy, seconded by Bill, to recommend a committee to increase the athletic fees at the high school level by 10% and O'Malley by 50% and a whole cycle. Okay, I'll just second you for any discussion. Yeah.
Mr. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Plantz.
Yes.
Ms. Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minial.
Yes.
Ms. Weesa.
Yes. Um, and also, um, in a further discussion about the athletics program, um, we were very grateful to have the opportunity to speak to Brian. We don't see him that often, and we know there's wonderful things going on. Um, we got talking about some other costs, and Bill brought up and revisited the idea of looking into, um, getting a van to transport students, like a 12-person van, uh, which has become very popular in other communities that, um, Bill works with as well. Um, so we have our transportation department who transports students to games. Um, and then our transportation department builds our athletic department, the cost of the drivers and so forth. Um, so some districts, because of that increased cost, have, um, either leased or purchased up to a 12-person van that you don't need a special license for, where the coach can throw the kids in the car and get there. In addition to, um, a financial impact that could have, um, which we're going to explore, there's also a timing effect where, um, we don't have to wait for bus drivers to be available, so we can get to their, um, events quicker. Um, so it sounds like something very worthy of looking into, um, to see if it's something our budget can manage in the future. Let's go across, let's view class, go into Martha's Vineyard with a smaller bus instead of a Piggery Ross. Um, so there might be some benefit in that, so that's something we're going to explore and get a report back on at one of our next meetings. You want to add anything to that, Ben?
No, you did a great job today. I, I will say that the only thing is that, uh, the time thing is really important nowadays. If you can get a team on a, in a van, get them to some different community versus the potential of having to wait for a bus, it can be really helpful, so. I don't know, like Melissa said, we're gonna have to cost it out and see if it makes financial sense here. We're at the end of the line, so maybe a new program would be a little bit more tricky, but I don't know. Cost it out scaled ones.
So after that, we talked about transfers, which we already approved in our consent agenda. Um, the transfers were to purchase Apple computers for our administrators that are at end-of-life. I learned it was only five years. Um, we may get some information on why only five years, but evidently that's been deemed the end of life for an Apple computer. Um, some money was moved around, um, for assessments, student assessments, um, software, also, um, legal fees, special education, and some project costs. Um, in addition to that, we talked about the budget, which we just approved, um, moments ago. There was discussion of our, uh, district tuition, or what we're going to see next year as far as the numbers. We did get a small report regarding, um, a potential increase for the fiscal, and superintendent, Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, um, the 2025 state budget, which is what we're in now, until we end June 30th, that there could be a potential increase in the circuit breaker and the extraordinary relief. So there is a potential of, um, getting more money in our budget for this year that can be spent in the fiscal 2026 studio. But as Gary explained, we have a teeter totter, which is a seesaw for us younger folks. How more money this year in that budget may be less money coming in in fiscal '26, but we can use the money in '26, which gives us better planning for fiscal year of '27. And if you want to expand on that, Gary, please go ahead with it.
Uh, yes, uh, you basically have it right. Uh, more money coming from FY '25 circuit breaker uh, allows us to allocate less cert, uh, from the circuit breaker in FY '26, which means that we can carry forward more money into FY '27. Best practice is always trying to carry forward, uh, the 100%. So we're nearing that, uh, maximum that you can carry forward, and that's the best, most financial sound way to do it.
Um, thank you, Beth. And we also had a brief conversation about, um, the potential of our federal grants being reduced. Not knowing what's coming out of the federal government, and it was mentioned that if grants are, end up being reduced, it could have an impact on programs like the O'Malley Academy. We're not worrying about it. We're not doing anything. We're just thinking, uh, maybe it's time to reach out and do some networking with our, um, the leadership to, um, put our position in that we don't want federal funding cuts. Um, because the impact is not going to help us. And that's it.
We do, we do have a sense now from our reports that the two biggest areas of federal funding, title one, in IDA, which is special education, reliable, is funding level. For the, uh, the federal, this league. Other ones, um, but also change the way that they're created. So all different things piled together given to states to do, have more flexibility on them, but at the same time also reduce the total amount of dollars. But that's still, that's, that's proposed, but federal government budget process takes longer than hours. Um, and so it just, what I'd like to approach, I'd take is be aware of these things, but not to panic or make decisions or get to work about it because it's a long road. Just what else? So you'll deal with what happens as opposed to what may.
I think we're going to have to run that, Bill, account.
Great job.
Let's get to the report. And the end of the fiscal '26.
As I've said before, and also, I'm going to say, thank you, Gary and Cody. Yep, first off, for all their work on many, many levels. Also, thank you to Amy, um, Michael Jarvis, our principals. Um, uh, we expanded, you know, some of the, you know, some of the processes, expanded involvement, um, especially with Mike and Amy, that has helped tremendously. You know, as folks cited, um, like strong process, it's got even stronger this year. Appreciate that.
Okay, um, next item is action. Uh, we have a couple of requirements to accept. Um, I move that we accept the fiscal year '26 Massachusetts FC 645, 21st, CCLC continuation slash summer enhancement grant of 101, 331. Nice and low.
Second.
Moving to second, okay. Uh, we have a roll call.
Mr. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Plantz.
Yes.
Ms. Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minial.
Yes.
Ms. Weesa. Yes.
And I move that we accept the fiscal year 2026 MA FC 127 slash 644, 21st century, promoting safe and healthy learning environments, elevating student voice, involving 296,000.
Second.
And moving to second, any discussion?
Mr. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Plantz.
Yes.
Ms. Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minial.
Yes.
Weesa. Yeah.
Um, and we, uh, next is I make a motion to approve the A. John Priscilla Aspire Scholarship. Second. So I just want to say, um, I had the opportunity to work with, um, Mr. Priscilla, Johnny Priscilla, uh, for many, many years. Um, he ended up passing from ALS. Absolute incredible man who loved life, loved helping people. Um, and I see his wife, Dorrie, put this forward. I didn't realize it until like when I needed. Um, but just what an incredible life he led and knowing they want to impact students that are interested, possibly interested in going to Gloucester. He, I know he would love the opportunity to talk to any student that would want to get involved in law and give him his insight. Hopefully turn out to be an incredibly credible advocate that he was. So I'm happy to leave this scholarship on agenda tonight.
Okay. Mr. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Plantz.
Yes.
Ms. Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minial.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Weesa. Yes.
Okay, um, we approved, already approved the budget.
Listen, this, um, A. J. Priscilla graduate, I want to say two years ago, but my last year.
It's his grandfather.
His grandfather.
Yeah, so both Priscilla boys, and, um, there's another one that's Joe. It's his grandfather.
Okay.
Yeah, his father's an attorney, but his grandfather was also an attorney. Okay, um, so we are going into executive session, and we will come out to, um, vote, um, to approve the superintendent's salary. So I may, I make a motion that we enter executive session pursuant to executive session. Purpose two of last general law, 30A, section 21A, to discuss strategy uh, and or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and purpose three of last general law, 30A, section 21A, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Gloucester, South East, Thoroughbahn, A. Thank you all for the vote.
Mr. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. Plantz.
Yes.
Ms. Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Minial.
Yes.
Ms. Weesa. Yes.